What's going on?
Hello.
Hello.
We're there finally. There we go.
Yeah, we have a lot of people.
Where's Pete?
I'm getting there.
Okay. I have a feeling it might have been quite a few logging in. Hi, Chris.
Will we start at 6:15 or?
Yes.
Oh, did we have a problem with the hookup?
I think. Chris, are you back from your anniversary trip?
I am, yeah.
Hello, are we there?
Yes, Walter, we're here.
Oh, my goodness. Well, let me tell you, this was not easy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I am here, gentlemen and ladies.
All right.
And audience.
Good to hear your voice, Walter.
I'm glad to hear you guys too. Here I am.
Okay, we're all. Randy's in too. Pete, are you there?
Let me just check.
We need you.
He's having problems getting on.
I know David was saying he was having problems. Are you on, David? Oh, can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, I've got no, I've got no visual, but I've got audio.
Hit the, hit the little camera, Dave, at the top.
There is. You might have to. Tom, you're on. I see Tom's on. I'm on.
Is it a six-person maximum on this? Like last thing?
Yeah.
Well, that's, you can see.
David, do you have a, do you have like a red arrow? That you can put on that might pull out more controls?
I don't have that page up. It just says connected to GoWebinar. And I launched it and.
What, you got the page that said launch it and then after it swirls around a little and launches, you should be able to see a sidebar come up and a little square in the middle and it should ask you to like put on your webcam or turn on your mic?
No, it just says the session is already running close.
So, we have quite a number of attendees. And I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to each one and ask them if they would like to say something. So, the first one is Adrian Graham. Adrian, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Not now, no thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next one is Alex Amaro. If I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Alex?
Hey. All good. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next one's Alicia Getz. Alicia, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Not today, thank you.
Okay. The next is Alicia DeCorpo. Alicia, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. The next is Allison Park. Allison, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Allison, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Okay. Next is Amy Fotopoulos. Amy, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Okay. Raise your hand. Amy, Amy, you self-muted yourself, so you'd have to unmute yourself. Amy, you're gonna have to unmute yourself. Next is Angela Herter. Angela, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Angela, would you like to speak to the council? Okay. April Brester. April, would you like to speak to the council tonight? April, would you like to speak to the council? Angela, raise your hand. Angela, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
I would like to speak tonight.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Good morning, town council members.
Angela, if you could.
My name is Angela Herter.
Yep.
My name is Angela Herter.
Yep, and your address?
207 Long Mountain Road, New Milford, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Okay, so, good evening, town council members. My name is Angela Herter. I'm a longtime teacher in New Milford, as well as a longtime resident. I am the vice president of CEA New Milford, a collective group of over 350 teachers. I would like to start by asking a question. I'm wondering if any of you can name a group that was told by its stakeholders to change their method of production and retool all current proven and practiced methods? Deliver a good reliable product that produces results as close to the results we got before we asked you to switch over. Oh, and we need to have this done immediately. Well, I have a group, and that group is a collective group of New Milford teachers. Instantly, we banded together, stretched our wingtips to an infinite span, carried along with us groups of students from one to as many 350 into this world of virtual learning. Online learning has brought education into the home and has given parents a front row view of the complexities, the work and real caring demonstrated by teachers during this educational process. As this unprecedented event unfolded, we left behind our children, our spouses, our partners, and other family members who depend on us for support. The sacrifices and obstacles we continue to make cannot ever be realized unless, of course, you are a teacher. Your website claims New Milford has a highly rated educational system with upgraded buildings. Now, how can we be honest and promote this with all the cuts you continue to make? The town council should not expect any more sacrifices from our teacher. It is shameful to believe that we can give more. In fact, the workload has increased by 75% on average, and our salaries have remained static. Through all of this, our teachers' union has found time to contribute to Camille's cupboard with a monetary donation, interviewed graduating seniors, awarded scholarships, provided Google Training Classroom, provided yoga instruction, and helped our fellow teachers with social and emotional support. The New Milford Public School System has realized substantial savings from the start of this pandemic with the absence of students in our school building. It has saved millions by reduced utilities, food, cleaning, maintenance, unneeded service contracts, outplacement education, transportation, food, field trips, stipends, professional development, senior class activities, senior class graduation, and numerous other miscellaneous expenses. So, I ask you again, in this meeting, are you prepared to tell the townspeople what the cost-saving is that you have realized from the absence of our students in our school building? In this meeting, are you prepared to tell the townspeople how the millions in savings will be used to offset the budget? The children of New Milford are taught by a highly educated group of teachers whom have been invested in the development of your children. We have never wavered through all the years during unsettling times. We have grit and we persevere. In closing, we are not complaining about the work. We want to see our hard work realized and reflected in respect for our working conditions. By respecting our working conditions, you send a message to our students and to our families that their learning matters. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is April Brester. April, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. April, would you like to speak to the council? Okay. Next is Ashley Alvin. Ashley, would you like to speak to the council?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay. Next is Barbara Wolf. Barbara, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Just listening, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Next is Barbara Morris. Barbara, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Becky Regan. Becky, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Becky? Okay. Next is Christine Benson. Christine, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Christine, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next is Betsy Stewart. Betsy, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Catherine Gardner. Catherine, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Catherine, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Cece, Cece, would you like to speak to the council tonight? If you do, you'd have to self-unmute yourself. Is yourself muted? Catherine Rosello? Catherine, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Okay. Next is Cecilia O'Brien. Cecilia, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Christina Stroh. Christina, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Christine Costable? Christine, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Christine Santarella. Christine, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. Just listening.
Next is Christine Taylor. Christine, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Christine Walsh. Christine, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
The next is Cindy Bonnell. Cindy, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a New Milford resident. I'm here as a teacher from New Milford.
Okay. Next is Cindy Cotter. Cindy? Cindy, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Claudia Demora. Claudia, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. Just listening.
The next is Kareen Clark. Kareen, would you like to speak to the council?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay. The next is Danielle Lambacy. I hope I'm pronouncing this right. Danielle, you have to unmute yourself. Is yourself muted? Danielle, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Danielle Brooks? Danielle, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next is Danielle Ragannette. Danielle, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Danielle, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next is Daryl Gregory. Daryl, would you like to speak to the council tonight? And you are self-muted, so you'd have to unmute yourself.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is David Mirto. David, would you like to speak to the council tonight? If you do, you would have to unmute yourself.
No, sir, I'm a teacher at New Milford High School, not a resident.
Thanks, sir. Next is David Mumma. David, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm just here as a teacher. I'm also a resident of New Milford.
Debbie Knipple? Debbie, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
And Debbie Philla, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Debbie, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Okay. And next is Denise Merrill. Denise, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Diana Bettes. Diana, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Diana, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Yes, yes, thanks for the opportunity. I don't envy you your job at all. Frankly, I'm not exactly certain what you have to do tonight, other than I do seem to understand that it involves. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's Diana Bettes, and I am a New Milford resident.
Thank you.
Sure. But I understand that it involves trying to save money somehow. I moved here in 1988, I think, and I've been teaching since 2000. And I can think probably three or four times that someone, either the town council or the board, but a group above us came to the teachers and said, listen, we just can't pay you. We're just gonna have to save money someplace. And so, we either had a pay freeze or a step freeze. And as I think about it, you know, I've been here about 20 years teaching now, and if I compare my salary to those of colleagues in other towns, you know, I realize that truly, I'm probably at a $20,000 disadvantage. And the reason I bring that up is because if we, if we give money back once, not only is it a precedent, but you give it back once and you do it in good faith, but then that money adds itself to the next year, to the next year, to the next year, and then you do it again, and now you've got a differential of several thousand dollars that then carry with it to the next year, to the next year. And when you've done this four times, you can see how the money adds up. So, I will do anything for the kids of New Milford. I'm a music teacher. I've given blood, sweat, and tears over the years. If I figure out how many hours I worked, probably a diamond, diamond hour, and I'll do it gladly. But you know what? No more cuts to the teachers, I beg you. And it might seem absolutely irreverential to say this, but there's a very silly Christmas movie out there called Christmas Vacation with Chevy Chase. And he, this man decides, the boss decides to cut all the Christmas bonuses the week of, the week of Christmas. And of course, everybody's counting on that money, just like we're counting on the contractual money we're supposed to get next year. And the wife hears about it. And the wife said, the wife chastises her husband, the boss, and the boss finally looks at the people and he says, you know, cuts like this look really good on paper, but Clark, because it's Clark W. Griswold, I'm sure some of you have seen the movie, but Clark, I have to remember, it's people, little people like you, and I have to think of how it affects you. Please think of how it affects the hundreds of teachers in New Milford and our morale if you go ahead and you do anything to our contract. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Diane Smith. Diane, would you like to speak to the council?
No, thank you.
Next is Donna Molinaro. Donna, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm here to listen.
Okay. The next is Doreen Covell. Doreen, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Yes, please. My name is Duran. Sorry.
Yep, and just your address as well. Thank you.
Not a problem. Duran Covell, 372 West Meeting House Road. And I'm speaking tonight as both a parent, a teacher and a parent. For the benefit of our students, their families, and our community, I'd like to urge the council to support the education budget without cuts and concessions to the teachers who in this unprecedented time, as always, are already giving so much of our time, money, and heart to our students and the community at large. It is essential that we as a community show teachers the respect and support they deserve so that we retain the best of the best. Cuts or concessions would do exactly the opposite. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Diane Rizzo. Diane, would you like to speak to the council?
No, thank you. I'm not a resident of New Milford. I work at Scotticoke. I'm a specialization teacher.
Thank you. Next is Eileen McGugl. Eileen, would you like to speak to the council?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Erin Lucia. Erin, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Go, you should spend some time, like.
Erin, would you like to speak to the council?
Not all of it, but maybe just say like what you learned from here. The point here is very good.
Okay. Next is Erin Moriarty. Erin, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Ethan Saldana. Ethan, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next, Gabby Passarelli. Gabby, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gail Bozakis. Gail, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Gail, would you like to speak to the council?
Sorry, just listening in support of New Milford teachers.
Thank you. Next is Gina Bernard. Gina, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Giovanna Scala. Giovanna, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a resident of New Milford, but I do work as a counselor at Sarah Noble.
Thank you. Next is Greg Gardner. Greg, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm a teacher at the high school, but not a town resident.
Okay. Next is Gretchen Rodini. Gretchen, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Heather Loughlin. Heather, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm just here listening.
Okay. Next is Hellet Sanchez. Hellet, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I am not a resident of New Milford. I am a school counselor, Helen Plain, but I thank you for listening to us tonight.
Yeah. Next is Hillary Ram. Hillary, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Hillary, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm here, I'm really here just to listen. I really wanted to hear the teachers and the parents and whoever had something to say. I'm just open ears. I'm here supporting the Board of Education budget before the cuts, unless I hear a very persuasive argument against it, but I, yeah, I'm here in support of the Board of Education budget, and I'm really here to listen. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next is Jacqueline Aaron. Jacqueline, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hi, my name is, yes.
Give your address as well. Thank you.
Of course. My name is Jacqueline Aaron, and I live at 9 Concord Way in New Milford. I would like to speak tonight in support of a fully funded school budget for the New Milford Board of Ed and the 2020-2021 school year. I've lived in New Milford for 11 years. While teachers, administrators, and other school faculty members across the nation have been working tirelessly to provide an online education for our students, we have all been navigating an unknown world of virtual learning and working in new ways. Making cuts to the school budget would be irresponsible, not only because of the current unknown state of education, but because New Milford's education system should be one that we should all be proud of, that's a part of our wonderful community. No one knows what school will look like in the future. Students will likely need emotional support systems as well as smaller classes, not to mention possibly masks, sanitizer, and other supplies for protection. Schools will likely need extra supplies for cleaning and possibly extra staff in order to comply with state mandates. Asking teachers to take a pay cut or to have a step freeze decreases their feeling of worth and morale and does not encourage the quality teachers to stay in New Milford. When the experienced teachers leave, our entire education system suffers. Supporting New Milford Public Schools means supporting our students, our teachers, in a fully funded budget. I implore you to think long and hard about the quality of the education that you expect and hope for from these teachers who pay you might be considering cutting or freezing. A strong education system which includes respected and happy teachers is what will draw people to move here and entice them to stay here to raise their families and live their lives, helping to support our local businesses and our economy in New Milford. My daughter will be entering New Milford Public Schools in a little over a year, but if New Milford doesn't start making the education of our children more of a priority, we may be moving elsewhere to somewhere that places more of a positive emphasis on education and fully supports the budgets that are needed for our students and children to thrive. Please support a full-funded Board of Ed budget for the 2020-2021 school year. Our children need to know that they are supported. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jane Cox. Jane, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm a teacher at the high school, but not a resident.
Next is Jane Danish. Jane, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Would you like to? No, thank you. I'm a non-resident. I'm a counselor at Sarah Noble, just here to listen and in support.
Thank you. Next is Janice Harrow. Janice, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Just listening.
Next is Jasmina, and I'm gonna mispronounce your name, your last name, Federovitch? Jasmina?
Yes, yes. Jasmina Federovitch?
Would you like to?
Yes, I would.
And if you could state your address?
Yes, I live at 46 Hip Road in New Milford.
Okay.
I have lived in New Milford for 25 years, and I have taught in the system for 21 years. From personal experience as a teacher, I see that daily, all teachers make a difference in every single child's life. We not only deliver content, knowledge, and skills, but we also provide social and emotional learning support and instill character values for our young people who are our future. Not supporting teachers with a pay cut diminishes teachers' value and respect in the community. I strongly urge you to reconsider and fully support a fully funded budget for the 2020-2021 school year. Thank you for. for the 2020-2021 school year. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Next is Jean Marie Vivian. Jean Marie, would you like to address the council tonight? Jean Marie? Would you like to address the council? Jean Marie, would you like to address the council tonight? Okay. Next is Jeff Ferguson. Jeff, would you like to?
Yeah, just briefly.
Yep, if you could state your address?
Yes, 14 White Swan Drive, Connecticut. And I would just like to add to what was also said about how teachers have had to reach for and change the way they teach is that we are essential workers and like police officers, nurses, as we go back into the environment of the classroom, just consider the fact that like these other workers, there, you know, there's a certain amount of risk that we also will take on as well. And consider that as part of what we have to do is in terms, as well as changing the way we teach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jeff Winter. Jeff, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jeff? Okay. Next is Jen Okowski. Jen, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jen? Would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next is Jen Lee Valencia. Jen Lee, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a resident. I'm a teacher at the high school.
Okay. Next is Jennifer Vincent. Jennifer, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Thank you. I'm a special education teacher at Scotticoke Middle School, but not a resident of New Milford.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, I'm sorry, I'm mispronouncing the name. Amadillo. Jennifer, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jennifer? Okay. Next is Jennifer Andrea. Jennifer, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Although I teach in New Milford, I'm not a resident. I'm here to support the teachers. I teach at Hillen Plain School.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Livingstone. Jennifer, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jennifer?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Jennifer Titus. Jennifer, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jennifer, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jessica Nolan. Jennifer, would you like, Jessica, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Jessica Lionetti. Jessica, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Jessica Pelletier. Jessica, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jessica, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Okay.
No, thank you. I'm not a resident of New Milford, but I am a teacher at the high school.
Thank you. Next is Jill Ross. Jill, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jill? Next is Jim Martin. Jim, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening, sir.
Next is Jim Winter. Jim, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Joanne Weber. Joanne, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a resident of New Milford, but I'm a teacher in the district.
Okay. Next is John Boothby. John, would you like to speak to the council tonight? John? Okay. Next is John P. John P., would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, I'm just gonna listen and support the teachers. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is John Wren. John, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
John Wren.
Thank you.
16 Sullivan Farm. I'd just like to make a few points to the town council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Obviously, you're considering cuts to the Board of Ed budget. As we've gone through this unprecedented wave here of online learning, many experts have said that the kids are losing up to 30% of what they would normally get in a normal school year. Because of that, next year is gonna be a bear and it's going to take extra, extra help to try to get everybody back up to speed and get everybody up to grade level. That's probably going to need extra money, extra people to help tutors, pairs, everything. So a big cut by the town council from the Board of Ed budget probably would hurt those efforts tremendously. We certainly don't need to lose any teachers. We don't need to lose any pairs. We don't need to lose anybody that's going to help the kids get back or as far, close back to where they should be normally in a given year. So that's why I would ask you to consider not taking too much money away from the Board of Ed because they're gonna need every penny of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Jonathan Basely. Jonathan, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Jonathan? Okay. Next, Joe DeFabio. Joe, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a resident of New Milford, but I teach English at the high school.
Thank you. Next, Joe Phala. Joe, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
I would. Thank you very much. Mayor and Town Council, Joseph Phala from 17 Cobble Lane in New Milford. And I will tell you, it has been a challenge, as many of you have known me, to mute myself at any given time. With that said, I ask that you support the budget as adopted by the Board of Finance. We are in a challenging year, a challenging time. All of our children are distance learning, which is difficult and not at the same pace as when we're in school going into next September. We will require additional attention for all our children, some of it to make up for losses at the current time because of the method we're learning by. There is gonna be a tremendous amount of effort that's gonna have to go into social, emotional aspects of learning, socialization, acceptance, and tolerance, particularly given the current environment, both health-wise and socially within the United States. This is a massive undertaking by our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators. People in society require additional time and additional needs right now. And no one in our school system is working any less. Our teachers, in fact, are working longer and harder because in addition to teaching, they have families that they have to care for and we're requiring more from all of our staff, from teachers, administrators, and our support staff continue to work. The key to the success of New Milford has always been its students and its educators. We cannot lose sight of that. And going into this next year, we are gonna have additional requirements. Because everybody's staying home, it's not that we are expending less funds. We are required, we're gonna need money to make up a difference for academically and socially. And how much more attention do our students and our staff need, given the current environment? So I implore you to adopt the budget that the Board of Finance put forward to you and let us all move forward as a community here for educators, for our teachers, for our students, and for our social, emotional well-being of this community. Thank you.
Next, Joyce Tuz. Joyce, would you like to address the council tonight?
Yes, please. My name is Joyce Tuz. I live at 20 Hillendale Drive and I'm also a fifth grade teacher in New Milford. I'm very concerned about reducing the Board of Ed's budget. The Board of Finance already reduced their proposed budget by $1 million, which is already too much of a cut. Our schools cannot be run efficiently with a 0% budget increase because none of their costs stay flat. Health insurance will not have a 0% increase. Electricity will not have a 0% increase. Heating will not have a 0% increase. Previously negotiated contracts with staff, food surfaces, or the bus company won't have a 0% increase. All of these things need to be paid. So if a 0% budget is approved, then that money will have to be cut from somewhere else. Will the number of teachers be reduced? First grade will already have 22 to 23 students per class next year. Can you imagine taking care of 22 six-year-olds and not just taking care of them, but teaching them to read and write and add? Will each and every child get the best education possible with so many other kids in the room? Will supplies be reduced? Teachers at the high school already have their paper rationed. They're only allowed so much each semester. Will our high schoolers receive the best education possible when their teachers cannot provide them with adequate resources? Will there be another attempt to reduce salaries? I know several teachers who left New Milford because their salary and step had been frozen so many times. They went to neighboring towns like Danbury and Brookfield and were hired making $20,000 to $30,000 more a year. Do we want all of our best experienced teachers to leave our town? Will that give our children the best education possible? I know you have a very difficult decision ahead of you, but you must understand that reductions to the Board of Education's budget will harm the students of our town and prevent them from receiving the best education possible. Thank you.
Next, Judith Larkin. Would you like to address the council tonight?
No, thank you. I am a resident and a teacher in New Milford, but I'm just here to listen.
Next is Kathleen Sorrell. Kate, I'm sorry, Caitlin. Caitlin Sorrell. Caitlin, would you like to speak to the council?
No, thank you. Just a New Milford teacher and resident listening.
Next is Karen Riverio. Karen, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Karen, would you like to speak to the council? You have to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak to the council.
Thank you very much. No, thank you, but I would like to thank my colleagues for doing an admirable job this evening. Thank you for listening to us.
Next is Kate DeBarber. Barbara, Kate, would you like to speak to the council?
No, thank you. I'm a non-resident, first grade teacher, just here to support the New Milford staff and students.
Thank you. Next is Caitlin Oviet. Caitlin, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Caitlin?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Catherine Ciparrelli. Catherine, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Catherine? Next is Catherine Colgrin. Catherine, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a resident of New Milford, but I am a teacher at Hillen Plain School. I'm just here to support all of the educators in New Milford.
Okay. Kathy, would you like to speak to the council tonight? You'd have to unmute yourself? Okay. Okay. Kelly Solomon. Kelly, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Am I unmuted?
Yep.
Yes, hi. No, I don't wanna speak tonight. However, I am a resident and a teacher at Scotticoke Middle School and I did submit a question. I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer at the end.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Arrows. Truee, I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your name. Kelly, would you like to speak to the council? Kelly, would you like to speak to the council? Okay. Next is Kelly Gallow. Kelly, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a New Milford resident, but I, no, thank you. I am not.
Next is Kevin Best. Kevin, would you like to speak to the council?
No, thank you.
Next is Kim Foss. Kim, would you like to speak to the council? Kim, would you like to speak to the council? Next is Kim Lea. Kim, would you like to speak to the council? Kim? Next, Kim Patella. Kim, would you like to speak to the council? Kim?
Yes, I would love to speak to the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Kim Patella. I am the president of the Teachers Union in New Milford. So I want to thank you for speaking on behalf of the public school teachers who serve your community in New Milford. As you know, my name is Kim Patella. I served in New Milford for 21 years at the elementary, intermediate, and middle school levels. I have been loyal to this district through many building and personnel changes. Furthermore, as president of the CEA New Milford Teachers Union, representing close to 385 professional public educators, I want you to know that the governor has said every single member of our union are essential workers. We tirelessly provide essential services and instruction to the students in this town. These critical workers applying essential services to the town in New Milford have demonstrated exceptional professionalism in educating New Milford students during normal times as well as during the present crisis and during other dilemmas that have occurred over the years. For example, Mineolin, your teachers were there for the kids. Bus strike, your teachers were there for the kids. The JPS closing, your teachers were there for the kids. When Saran Noble opened and we had to make all kinds of adjustments, your teachers were there for the kids. Sandy Hook, your teachers were there for the kids. The microburst, your teachers were there for the kids. And the floods that occur, your teachers were there for the kids. These events can cause trauma in a young person's life more than we adults can sometimes comprehend. Teachers, coaches, counselors, and other members of this union are professionally trained. Some of us have multiple master's degrees, not only to teach academics, but to guide and nurture your students through these difficult times. Through it all, the school system perseveres and the teachers tirelessly find creative ways to enhance the working conditions and learning conditions. That's our mission. This year, we're dealing with the new crisis, the pandemic. So since early March, the New Milford Public School teachers, parents, and students participated in a virtual world of learning. Again, we never experienced this before, yet we all found ways to adapt to this new way of learning. And needless to say, the stress of our teachers have never been higher, yet the teachers were continuously learning. were continuously learning while designing and developing collectively. I must say, we were quite successful in continuing the learning because we know our students relied heavily on us. Through much theory and collaboration, we worked together. The link between all bargaining units stronger than ever. We all asked each other how we can help and support to enhance the learning. Yet, how can we... Can they ask us, how can we help and support you? No, we... You asked us, how can we make concessions? How can we make more sacrifices? Well, according to your New Milford's... Quote, "New Milford has a highly rated educational system with upgraded buildings and beautiful athletic turf fields." So answer my questions. How are you providing learning opportunities for our students and teachers to effectively enhance learning and supporting and working condition? How are you planning to support a highly rated educational system with upgraded buildings and beautiful athletic turf fields if you keep chipping away at the budget by cutting? Remember, our students rely on the adults of this town to provide exceptional services and enhance and enrich their learning. But let's go back to the professional educators who serve this district. These teachers who educate students in New Milford didn't abandon their mission. Instead, they are working tirelessly online with parents, students, and each other. But instead of help, you ask us to make concessions. Asking for concessions and cutting from the budget is not the answer. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Christian Giraud. Christian, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Christian, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next, Kristin Backus. Kristin, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, but thank you.
Next is Kristin Stoli.
No, thank you.
Next is Christie O'Neil. Christie, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Laura Quesos. Quesanos, Laura, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, my name is Laura Baltista-Castell. I'm a Spanish teacher at Scotticook Middle School.
And your address, please?
25 Malibu Lane, New Milford. And I just want to reiterate what Joyce and Kim Patella were saying. I think that, you know, as a teacher myself, I think that we give so much, we, you know, even pay for supplies. I know that I do out of our own pockets, and I think to ask us to give more, it's not that we're not unwilling to give more, but I think that it creates a negative climate, And we're already working, you know, in this unprecedented time where, you know, there is a lot of stress, so... Yeah, I think that we need strong teachers, we need to support teachers.
Anything else, Laura?
Oh, that's it.
Thank you. Next is Lori St. Germain. Lori, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Lori?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is Linda Fields. Linda, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Linda Robinson. Linda, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next is Linda. Linda, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm just a teacher listening.
Okay. Next is Lisa Lee. Lisa, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next is Lisa Montemiro. Lisa, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Next is Lisa Morlan. Lisa, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, thank you. I'm not a resident in New Milford, but I am a teacher at Saranoke.
Okay. Next is Lisa Mosey. Lisa, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
No, but I am a 33-year teacher in the District of New Milford, of Arlington, and I am a past president of the CEA New Milford Organization, and I'm here to support all the teachers in New Milford. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Tarza. Lisa, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Lisa?
No, thank you. I'm a non-resident school counselor at Northville Elementary here in support of education and New Milford's children.
Next is Lynn Nissenbaum. Would you like to speak to the council?
Yes, I would, thank you. My name is Lynn Nissenbaum. I live at 7 Melissa Lane, New Milford, and I'm a school psychologist at Northville Elementary School and also for the district. I'm here to speak tonight to ask for support for the Board of Education budget, and as a school psychologist, I wanted to provide some insight into what our role is, since many of you may not be familiar with what we do, and also speak about how our role has changed and been impacted by the current health crisis. There are six school psychologists in New Milford, and we're responsible for many things. One significant area is the identification and evaluation of special education students. Schools are federally mandated to find and identify students in need of special education. The school psychologists are integral members of the team that assesses and evaluates special education eligibility. Additionally, once identified, students need to be periodically retested according to federal guidelines. Every student attending school in New Milford, both public and private, who are identified as needing special education support, was evaluated by one of these six school psychologists. For most of these students, a part of the evaluation requires individualized face-to-face testing. We've been unable to provide that testing since school closed on March 13th. All of these evaluations, and there are dozens and dozens and dozens of these evaluations, have been put on pause, but once school resumes, all that testing needs to be made up, and we're going to have to do that while handling the 2020, 2021 caseload of new referrals and evaluations. As I mentioned, evaluation is just one of the many roles that we play. As school psychologists, we, along with our school counseling and social worker colleagues, are responsible for providing social, emotional, behavioral support to all students. At present, and especially when we resume school in the fall, our students will be experiencing unprecedented needs in these areas: grief, trauma, and everything that goes along with it. Decades of research, practice, and policy have demonstrated the effectiveness of social, emotional learning and supporting students' academic and long-term successes. This is a basic need. We have to ensure that our students' basic needs are met so that they can be available for learning. We need comprehensive district-wide and school-wide social, emotional learning to support and maintain our students' mental health and well-being. As the mental health professionals in our schools, we, school psychologists, along with the school counselors and social workers, need the time, space, and resources to work directly with students and staff to integrate social, emotional learning throughout our buildings and to provide social and behavioral support as needed. We need to collaborate with our educators, as every single staff member is going to be crucial in providing social, emotional support to our students. Because of all I just mentioned, I'm concerned that we may not even be able to provide the necessary and mandated services that our students need with the current level of staffing, and I am doubly concerned if any staffing cut is proposed for next year. While we focus on the academic needs of our students, please don't lose sight of their very basic need to feel safe, supported, and valued. I ask you, as the Town Council of New Milford, do you want to make our students feel safe? And do you value them? And if you do, you will support our budget and not give any concession or make us give any concessions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Mallory Lee. Mallory, would you like to address the council tonight?
No, thank you.
Next is Maria Lopez. Maria, would you like to address the council tonight? Maria?
No, thank you.
Next is Mary Ann Durkin. Mary Ann, would you like to address the council tonight? Mary Ann, would you like to address the council tonight? Okay. Mary Ann Hines. Mary Ann, would you like to address the council tonight? Mary Ann? Next is Mary Albert Teris. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, but Mary, would you like to address the council tonight?
I'm not a resident. I'm a teacher at Scotticook Middle School, but thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Campbell. Mary, would you like to address the council tonight? Next is Matt Wall. Matt, would you like to address the council tonight? The next is Matthew Hirsch. Matthew, would you like to address the council tonight?
No, thank you.
The next is Mara McNulty. Mara, would you like to address the council tonight?
Just listening.
Okay. Next is Meg Lago. Meg, would you like to address the council?
No, thank you.
Next is Megan Boswell. Megan, would you like to address the council tonight? Next is Megan Byrd. Megan, would you like to address the council tonight? Megan?
Yes, please, thank you. Megan Byrd, to Carlson Road. I wanted to say first, thank you to all the amazing and dedicated educators that are on this call tonight. You are the backbone of bringing up the next generation in both New Milford and in the country, really, actually, the world. And it was very heartening to hear so many of you online tonight. And I wanted to stress that I know in my heart that you're not online tonight just because it affects you personally and your salaries, but because I know that you are online because you're fighting for my children and all the other children in town, and thank you very much. You are appreciated, and I recognize your value. Now, that said, I'm here to speak on behalf of their budget as well, and I wanted to... I wanted to... I emailed every council member and the mayor, asked for a response from everybody. This was done on Friday. I got responses from three of you, so I'm speaking because I don't know that you read the emails. But in essence, the gist was very much what Joe Falia said, except for one thing. I don't want you to approve what the Board of Finance approved. I want you to approve what we need, which is more than what the Board of Finance approved. The Board of Finance put through a cut against what the Board of Education sent over and said that they needed. This Town Council already had agreed to them needing that at one point, and we now know that we are going to need more resources and not less in the coming school year. So to now approve a cut would be a tremendous loss to our community. Recently, she signed on to my Facebook account and got some memories that popped up, and it was some signs that someone had posted somewhere, and it said, "If you're planning for one year, plant rice. If you're planning for 10 years, plant trees. If you're planning for 100 years, educate children." And nothing can be further from the truth. We need to educate our children so that their lives as adults can be easier, and our grandchildren's lives can be easier, and those who are already grandparents' great-grandchildren's lives. For planning for the future, you need to educate your children. There is no way around that, and it costs money to educate the children, and it is all of our responsibility in this town, in this country, in the world. It's all of our responsibility to chip in and educate our children and do it properly and do it in a way that all of our lives can be better in the future. I heard some educators speak tonight, and some of the things that I wanted to point out is that one of them I heard say that she was here in support of educators and also the students, and that cannot be any more true. And I think that that rings true of every educator that came on to this call, and I've seen it firsthand through my own students' interactions with their teachers, and not just their own teachers, but every educator that they've interacted with in the building. There's been care and concern, and it's amazing what these people have done in the short time of two weeks to completely turn around everything they've been taught and deliver their product, as was said early in the call, in a completely foreign way, and to do it with integrity and professionalism. And I think that you really need to look at that and look at what we really will need going forward and plan on that, not plan on cutting things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Megan Sylvester. Megan, would you like to address the council tonight? Next is Melissa Nahan. Melissa, would you like to address the council tonight? Would you like to address the council tonight? The next is Michael Arros. Michael, would you like to address the council tonight? Mickey Harkin. Mickey, would you like to address the council tonight? Mickey, would you like to address the council tonight? Mickey, would you like to address the council? Okay. Nathan Hatfield. Nathan, would you like to address the council tonight? Nick Ryan. Nick, would you like to address the council tonight? Nick? Nick? Okay. Nick Smith, would you like to address the council tonight? Nick? Nick, would you like to address the council tonight? Nicole Duverger. Nicole, would you like to address the council tonight? Nicole? Nicole Gregory, would you like to address the council tonight? Nicole? You have to unmute yourself, Nicole. Okay. Nicole Lawler. Nicole, would you like to address the council tonight? Nicole? Nicole, would you like to address the council? Next is Pat Erickson. Pat, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Pat? Need to unmute yourself? Pat, can you? Can you unmute yourself? Pat? Okay. How about Patrick Duncan? Patrick? Would you like to address the council tonight? Patrick? Rebecca Gittens. Rebecca, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Rebecca, you have to self-mute? Unmute yourself if you'd like to speak to the council tonight? Okay. Robin Barboza? Robin? Would you like to speak to the council? Robin? Would you like to speak to the council tonight? Robin Hicks? Robin, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Robin? Okay. Roseanne Petrusso. Robin, or Roseanne, would you like to address the council tonight? Robin? Roxanne Kraft, would you like to address the council tonight? Roxanne? Sarah? Okay, so Roxanne, you have to unmute yourself, Roxanne. Sarah DiMastro. Sarah, would you like to address the council tonight? Sarah? You have to unmute yourself. Stephanie Carlson. Stephanie? And? Let's see. Susan Brawford. Susan, would you like to address the council? Susan? You have to unmute yourself. Susan? Susan?
Could I say something, Pete?
Absolutely, Mary Jane.
I guess somebody just texted me. They said people can't unmute themselves. Do we know what's going on with that?
I don't know. When I pull up attendee, it says attendee is self-muted. So they have to unmute yourself? Or they have, could you text them back and ask them they're having problems doing that?
Apparently, a lot of people are having problems that they just can't, not able to unmute.
Let me call Dave Watts and see if we can get him on the phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, one second.
Pete, are you there? It's Ken Kuzloski.
Hey, Glenn. We're having issues with people trying to unmute themselves and then mute. Is there, is there something blocking that?
I don't think so. I know I just re-logged myself into the webinar and noticed, because I was trying to mute someone earlier and just went to, actually, for Susan, clicked the unmute her because I guess when you're clicking to unmute, it's not unmuting the person.
Okay, so can you unmute if I can't unmute them?
Yes, I will. As soon as you say the person's name, I can unmute for you, Pete.
Yeah, so let's go back. Who did you have?
Excuse me, Pete, I'm sorry. But we have people who've gotten through, and everybody has the opportunity on their screen to unmute and mute.
Yep.
You don't have to do it.
Apparently, they can't do it, though. It's not allowing them to do it. That's, I guess that's what they're saying the problem is.
Well, some people have.
Some people have, but there's a lot of people that are texting me that are saying they can't get in. There's no way they can unmute themselves.
So Ken, can you start with Mickey Harkin? Are you trying to unmute her?
Mickey Harkin. One second. Yep, let me just scroll up to what's to attendee.
This is all alphabetical.
Hi, can you hear me?
So Mickey's unmuted now.
Yep. Yes, you can hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. So thank you to whoever, whomever texted Mary Jane because it was getting very frustrating on our end of things. Okay. The first thing I would say is normally, so I've been on this meeting as well as you for 90 minutes. Normally, I'd be really pissed.
I'm sorry, Mickey. Mickey, can you give me the address?
Oh, sorry. 11 Meadow Ridge Lane, New Milford. So normally, be really pissed, I mean upset, having to wait this long. But instead, I'm very proud because I had to wait this long due to the amount of the teachers and the staff of New Milford that is coming out to show their support. All right, just a couple of things. I know that when the Board of Finance made the cut in March, made the million-dollar cut in March, we were in the crux of the coronavirus. It was the middle. We didn't know if we were coming, if we were going, what the plan was or anything like that. At that point, people had no jobs. Stock market was down. Employment was, unemployment was incredible. And the Board of Finance thought that they wanted to give the taxpayers a break, and they eliminated $1 million from the school budget. It is now June. We have a much better picture of what is going on. Stores are opening. People are going back to work. People have received unemployment checks. Some of them have made more in unemployment than they would actually do in their jobs thanks to the bonuses. So we have a very different picture that is going on right now. The other thing, and the other thing I noted is, we know, and this was stated in the Board of Finance, that the Board of Education always has a surplus. And this is true. There always is a surplus. The question is, we don't know quite what the surplus is yet. And also, that surplus is going to get used up in a snap because of all the retrofitting and PPEs that have to be acquired by the district should we go back to school. The other thing is, I have seen that the amount of technology that the teachers are now utilizing, which I think is absolutely fantastic, things that they can integrate into their classrooms for universal design for learning, or it helps all students. The problem with the technology is, right now, all the programs are free. So it's going to cost at some point, should we go back to online learning, those problems that we've been using, they will end up costing money. I have to say, I'm very impressed by the teachers. Basically, it's if they were playing first base all their life, and now they had to learn to play catcher. It's a totally different position for them, and I'm proud of what they've done on the blink of the eye. My question with the understanding of opening the contract, what I have seen is that teachers are essential staff. They are essential personnel. They may not be in the hospitals. They're not driving ambulances. They're not working with COVID patients, but they are still essential staff. You do not see the hospitals going to their nurses and their doctors saying, ooh, we're losing money on this whole thing. I think we need to reopen your contract. To ask them to do that shows disrespect to the teachers, being that they are essential staff. And I would say, every parent in this town who has had to homeschool their kid and work on distance learning would definitely agree with me on that. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken, are you still on?
Yes, I am, Pete.
Okay. So next one was Megan Boswell?
Megan Boswell. Okay. She is unmuted now.
You had passed me before. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one was Patrick Duncan? Patrick, would you like to address the council? Patrick, would you like to address the council? Patrick? Okay. Can you go now, Kenneth, to Randy Gray? Who's next? Randy?
I'm just here to support my colleagues and the children of New Milford. I have nothing to say, so thank you.
Thank you. And can you do the next one, Kenneth, which is Rebecca Rosen? Rebecca?
Okay.
Just listening. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Robin Hicks?
Okay.
Thank you for unmuting me. Yes, my name is Robin Hicks. I would like to speak briefly. I am a New Milford resident. My address is 108 Candlewood Lake Road North in New Milford. I have been a teacher in this town since 1998. I have three children who are all graduates of New Milford schools. I have always been exceptionally proud to be a teacher in New Milford. My students are more like my children than just students. They may be my school students, they may be my schoolchildren, but they're still my children. Nobody goes into education to get rich. But in my time as a teacher in this town, I, to echo what Kim Patel was saying, we have had a very long history of give backs with very few returns. I understand that we are in a very difficult time right now, but things are looking up. It feels like for me, over the years, that we are always just looking to get by, get by, get by. We are never really looking so much to advance education and to advance and help the whole child to become a productive member of society, which is actually the whole reason behind a free public education. We are here, we're tasked with that. We are trying to ready children for jobs that don't exist. Even as our jobs have changed, that, that has become even more true. And so I think when we continually cut and cut and cut, and we just rely on teachers to just do it anyway, we end up losing some really good people. And anyone who's been around or been in, looking at our education system over the years, probably has noticed the loss of many, many good teachers. And I think that our children and our town deserves more. I think that we have to step up and say, yes, we care about our schools, that they are something that is exceptionally important to our town and something of which we can be proud because we know that we have given our all. Also, I just, it has occurred to me that no one has actually approached us with any idea of what concessions we should be considering. And I just wondered about that. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next, Ken, next, Roseanne Petrusso.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Roseanne Petrusso. I live at 10 Cortland Drive. I spoke a couple of weeks ago. I brought up things about, you know, unforeseen expenses that were going to occur as a result of the COVID crisis. I talked a little bit about curriculum, teaching and learning. And I'm an educator in a nearby district. And today, we started forming planning team, team tasks, planning team groups. And so I have a little bit more specific things, you know, for us to talk about when we're saying we're going to increase costs. There's going to have to be facility modifications to comply with federal and state guidance. Right now, the state's recommendation is one, a ratio of one to seven students for summer school. And in the next six weeks, when we're planning for school to start again, you know, we're probably looking at maybe one to 10 or something like that. So you're probably going to need more staff to meet the needs. You're going to have, we're going to have to find classrooms, possibly in other buildings. We are going to have to look at transportation, which we know is an especially high cost. We are going to have to look at reallocating financial and staffing resources, look at building capacity. In terms of teaching and learning, I spoke to this a little bit last time. Curriculum work has to be done. We need to identify what are the core competencies at each grade level and set priorities, because we can't teach everything as if we're in school, if we're doing virtual or blended learning. Professional development follows along with that. Teachers need training, so do parents. We have to, Mickey made a great point about techn- Um, we have to, um, Nikki made a great point about technology. We are all benefiting across the country right now from these free resources that we will have to pay for come the fall, and, um, hats off to those companies to have been forward thinkers, but we, that's going to be an increase in our technology budget. We are going to have to provide supports for all students to be successful, and I'm sure that's going to mean, um, being flexible about how we meet the needs of our special education students and where we meet their needs, and making sure that, that we're reaching all of our students. In, in terms of cutting staff, um, I'm sorry, asking for concessions from staff, I was really surprised about that because a lot of these things that need to be done, need to be done um, with teachers as a member of your team. And teachers need to be, uh, this is going to cost the district tons of money, and you're going to need teacher volunteers to serve on committees, to work with the district in terms of finding creative solutions. And if you are truly asking for concessions, I think that's probably going to hurt your relationship with the teachers, and you're going to, um, have less, have them less likely to volunteer to, to help when they've been burned by you. And, um, not you personally, but by the system. And teachers do truly have the best interest of kids at heart. That's why we've been able to do this emergency remote teaching as well as we could thus far. Um, but we need to plan ahead, and I think that people made a really good points, you know, especially, um, that, you know, we're always responding and reacting in education, and we're not really planning to advance education, and and that's a shame, and that's why we've been fighting year after year not to have reductions to our budget, because all we're doing is, is sitting there trying to um, tread water instead of making advancements for students. And right now, we're going into something with our eyes wide open, knowing that there's going to be adjustments made, and to not um, go back to an increase in the education budget would be foolish. Um, you know, I agree that the Board of Finance made that decision, um, you know, when things were a few weeks ago, when things were, were different with the economy. Um, you know, and, and to my understanding was that they're going to save $43 or somewhere around that number a year for households, and at the end of the day, I think you have to ask yourself, what kind of hero do you want to be? Do you want to be the hero that saves $43 a year for each household and turns your back upon the children of our town? Or do you want to be the hero who champions for the children and educators in this town by supporting their increased needs in an unprecedented time of uncertainty? And your choice is your legacy, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear us, um, and making these decisions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth, can we do Roxanne Craft?
There you go.
Roxanne? No, thank you. No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kenneth, can we do Sarah Del Mastro?
Alrighty, unmuted by us.
Oh, uh, I'm a teacher at the high school, just supporting uh, New Milford teachers.
Thank you. Ken, can you do, uh, Sarah Herring? It looks like she may be offline now.
Hi, no, thank you. I'm just listening tonight in support of my fellow educators in New Milford.
Thank you. Uh, Ken, can you, uh, unmute Shawna Bear Gazarelli Graham? Shawna, would you like to speak to the council? Shawna, would you like to speak to the council? Okay. Ken, can you do Stephanie Carlson? Stephanie, would you like to speak to the council? Stephanie? Okay. Ken, can you unmute Susan Bratt-Braford? Susan, would you like to speak to the council? Thank you, Ken. Susan, would you like to speak to the council? Okay, next is, uh, Susan McNamara. Ken, can you unmute Susan McNamara?
She's unmuted, she's self-muted.
Yep. Susan, would you like to speak to the council? Okay. Next is, uh, Susan Partello.
Okay.
Susan, would you like to speak to the council?
Uh, I don't wish to address the council. Um, I'm listening in tonight as a retired New Milford teacher, and I'm just here to support the, the wonderful teachers and students, um, of this town.
Thank you. Uh, next, Ken, is Susan Swanson?
Hello, yes, I would like, yes, I would like to speak, please.
Can I have your address, please?
18 Morwick Manor, New Milford.
Okay.
I am a New Milford educator as well as a town resident. Members of the town council, community participants, and attendees, good evening. 2020 has been a year of challenge for all of us. What began with the promise of New Year's resolutions soon morphed into a struggle to survive as a pandemic spread across the nation and into the lives of our community. But this tragedy has also brought strength and unity, opportunities to build bridges between those providing essential support services and those within our community with the greatest need. In the past, schools have helped to address the needs of our students in times of tragedy. Recently, we have seen more tragedy. While some places have become divided, Connecticut has continued to stand strong. New Milford has stood together. But all crises negatively impact our most vulnerable populations. As a support service of the community, schools have been there time and time again in times of crisis to provide counseling, education, and a vast array of support services to address the plethora of needs of our most vulnerable and dependent population, our children. As minors, they count on us to provide care. From helping to fund meal programs to support basic needs to educational needs for learners of all abilities and learning styles to social and emotional programs to address those needs hidden beneath the surface. In order for schools to function effectively, we need to count on a budget to offer these amenities. Changes to those terms result in a domino effect with long-lasting, sometimes lifelong consequences. Educators have acted in good faith, rolled up their sleeves, sharpened their technology skills, and reached out in many ways to our students and their families as invested members of the community. Help us to continue to meet our community needs by maintaining the current terms of our contract and school budget, which have been negotiated in good faith by all involved. Together, let's take care of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth? Uh, Susan Waldman?
Okay.
Susan, would you like?
But self-muted.
Susan, would you like to speak to the council?
Yes, thank you. I am finally unmuted. Um, Susan Waldman, One Hardwood Circle, New Milford. I am a teacher at Northville presently. I teach art, and I used to teach special ed at Sarah Noble. I've been teaching in New Milford since 2007. And I've seen the district grow. In fact, it's grown so much that we have 100 more students at Northville Elementary School than we do at Hill and Plain. We have 463 at Northville and 363 at Hill and Plain. Now, this might not affect the most teachers, but for a specials teacher, it does. I have 700 students a week, and that's a rotating schedule that has no input as to a consistency for special ed, autism, any student that needs a consistent schedule. I know the world is different, and it will look different. However, they're expecting another preschool of three-year-olds at Northville, and I just wanted to let you know that as an art teacher, I have duties in the morning, duties in the afternoon, 20 minutes to eat lunch, sometimes back-to-back classes. And it has become very bad for my health. In fact, I caught the flu in February. They couldn't diagnose what flu it was at that time. I was as sick as a dog. The students were sick, they had on and off fever. The building has no circulation, no air conditioning, as we all know. But it was really, um, quite a scene for me, and I came back to school with a mask and gloves on. Early February, um, by the time I, I knew that there was a virus, I, I didn't really know what I had. So into March, until we were out, I wore a mask. And, um, it was what I had to do to prevent myself from 700 people a week. So I just wanted you to be aware of the kind of workload I have and what it has done to my health with that overabundance of students. And I do hope that you do not cut any budgets or anything for our teachers. I've worked alongside many of the ones I've heard tonight, and they are devoted, they are dedicated, they would give their life for these students, just like at Sandy Hook. So I just want you to be aware of that and that I have felt that with every single teacher I have been working with. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Kenneth, next, Tammy McInerney?
Yes, hi, um, this is Tammy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, hi, Mr. Mayor and the, uh, members of town council. Um, thank you so much for your time this evening. I do have a couple of, um, comments that I would like to make. Um, so, uh, number one, uh, my biggest concern um, for when and if we return to school in the fall is the probable mandate, um, that are going to be handed down to us by the state, and as we know, a lot of mandates handed down from the state are unfunded, which means we as a district, we as a town, need to find ways to fund, um, those mandates. Um, some of these mandates, and you've heard this from others, will include classroom sizes, social distancing protocols, bus seating, necessary PPE. Um, also, um, take into consideration the social, emotional issues, um, that the district will be faced with. Kids will have been out of school for at least five and a half months, and that's if we return to school on time. Many will be anxious, and there will be behavioral problems that will be on the rise, that will be increased, and we will need staff um, in order to circumvent, um, a lot of these issues. Um, or else the, the results are going to be disastrous. Um, we will eventually go back to school, okay, and we really need to be prepared, and we really need to take these things into consideration so we can um, be prepared. Um, so while I do not envy the task that you have tonight, um, when you deliberate, you must discuss how you plan to help the school district um, plan for the mandates passed down to the district by the state, because the last thing anything wants to do is have to go back to the taxpayers for a supplemental appropriation, just to keep the district, um, afloat. Um, we need to be proactive. Um, finally, I just want to say I am amazed and overwhelmed by the amount of educators that we have on this call tonight. These people have worked all day long with our kids, okay, answering questions, posting things on Google Classroom, preparing, um, their curriculum, and then at nighttime, when it's time to maybe make dinner or spend some time with their family, they're here, fighting for our school, fighting for our kids, fighting for our school budget. Um, and I am, and I am in awe of all of them and want to thank them so much for, for, um, being here tonight and, and supporting the district. Our teachers, administrators, and support staff have all worked tirelessly to support our children. Please, let's support them back. They have risen to the challenge. Will you? This is not a year for us to be cutting the, the budget. The Board of Education and the school district have come to you with what they need um, to run this budget and, uh, or to run the school district, and, um, you need to trust them. You need to trust that that is actually what they need. Um, lastly, um, I just want to ask Mayor Pete, if before you go into your deliberations, can you please take a roll call, um, of all the town council members who are on the call tonight, because I do only see six on the screen, and I think a lot of people would like to know who is actually participating. Um, and because I didn't say it at the beginning, um, my name is Tammy McInerney. I live at 33 Sterling Drive. Uh, for transparency sake, I am a member of the Board of Education, but I spoke to you tonight as a taxpayer and most importantly, a parent. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, next, Tara Juggler. Kenneth, Tara, you could, do that, Tara?
Hi, good evening. I am just here in support of, uh, myself and my colleagues as a New Milford, uh, social worker in the district, but I am not a town resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kenneth, next, Tori Backer?
I'm just here to speak as both an educator, a mother, and a resident of New Milford. I live, uh, sorry, I am so nervous. I have never done this before. Okay, I live on 8 Wellheaven Drive in New Milford. I have been an educator at Scatacoke Middle School for five years. During those five years, I have seen young, creative, and energetic teachers leave to go to other towns. They have left because of lack of respect, lack of pay, among other things. And I just can't believe in five years that I've seen that. As a taxpayer, I want the best education for my children. I have three children in New Milford Public Schools. I have two at the middle school and one at the high school. Sorry. And a three-year-old, which I apologize. That she's shouting because you can imagine what all the teachers and parents have to juggle. My home has six people. My husband, a special education teacher at the high school, I myself, a special education teacher at Scatacoke Middle School, and my daughter, an essential worker at Big Y. I have to help my children, the ones that I give birth to, not the ones I consider my children through school. I have to help them with their education and their social, emotional well-being. My children, who are normally very good students, have become incredibly anxious and have started to retreat into themselves. And so it's been very difficult. I apologize. We have gone through a traumatic experience, but I have to stay strong, and I do. I do my best to stay strong. I make sure every meeting I have a smile on my face. I talk to my students with care, and I am very, very dedicated to them. I have spent phone calls, our phone calls, helping students maneuver their distance learning, as well as helping them feel better and comfortable. So I feel that as educators, we have a lot on our plates, and we do deserve the respect and the budget necessary. I say that as an educator, I say that as a parent, I say that as someone who will be living with the future generations, taking care of me when I'm in a, in a home. So remember that teachers, they create all other professions. So I would like you to please make sure we always have what we need, because I've lived in other districts where we've had to, as parents, provide paper, pencils, crayons, paper towels, toilet paper. And I don't want to have my students live that way. I don't, because a lot of the students who live here in New Milford don't have the money for that. A lot of students depend on us, depend on our supplies to get them through the day. So thank you so much for your time. I was very nervous, but, um, please help support the teachers and the budget fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth, next, Tracy Nevens. Tracy?
Hi, Pete. I'm a little bit more collected than I was the last time. Um, I have been teaching in New Milford since 1996 as part of my 28-year career. Um I have been teaching in New Milford since nineteen ninety-six as part of my twenty-eight-year career. And to sum up, I think, what everyone has been saying, and I have to say that I am extremely proud to be part of this very professional group that you have represented here. I wrote a poem, and it's called "What Does the Town of New Milford Say to Its Teachers?" Each morning, day and night, I try my very best to give my students and their families lessons filled with learning, my love, and nothing less. I do so because I want them to know, even from a distance, I am still here and want to hold in their best. I constantly email my students and their parents, all while attending meetings galore, hours and hours of cre- to create engaging lessons in formats I've never used before. How do I post it? Where does this go? How does this website work? Hours of P D just to feel like it's me. How can this be? I just want them to all to know, I'm still here, I still care, I'm really trying my best. Each day, the to-do list grows longer and longer, never to reach the end. Trying to sleep, my thoughts whirl around. I'll get better. The kids are counting on me. The town will appreciate me. You'll see. All the while, working from home where no one can see. Not a nurse or a doctor or a clerk in a store. Teachers are working very hard, essential as never before. My own family neglected whilst I tried to get everything done. Myself neglected while sitting for hours and hours on end. Little time for eating, difficulty sleeping, can't help but wonder, do the kids understand the material? Are they safe? Are they eating? Are their family members well? Some were not. Some family members were sick. Some lost relatives. Teachers love to deal with the stress of this entirely by themselves together while continuing to do what's right. After all the dedication, stepping up, and devotion we've shown, how does our town of New Milford recognize its teachers' selfless, selfless hard work? By not supporting the Board of Ed budget and asking its teachers for more. What message does that convey? All the personal sacrifice you've made, teachers, means absolutely nothing to us, nothing. Your hard work, it means nothing to us. What does that say about how they feel about the children? If the town valued its teachers as it does the other essential workers, you'd pass the Board of Ed budget not by asking for concessions, but showing respect for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next, Trevor Herbest. Kenneth, you'd undo Trevor. Trevor, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
Good evening, Pete. I'm just listening in tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Tricia Blood. Tricia, would you like to speak to the council tonight? Tricia? Okay. Kenneth, the next one is Jenny Langree. Jenny, would you like to speak to the council tonight?
I would.
Okay, Jenny?
Jenny Langree, thirty-five Meeting House Terrace here in New Milford. And I wanted to thank you all for listening to me, and I wanted to ask for your support for the education budget. You have heard from a lot of people saying we redone teaching. Every and not just teaching, the the social workers, the librarians, everybody has revamped everything. With very little training, uh we're using, I call kids on my own phone because you didn't give me a phone. I had to use what I have here. And we got a lot of thank yous, and a lot of parents are very appreciative. And then at the end of Teacher Appreciation Week, I hear, by the way, the town wants us to give back stuff. And I'm like, kind of feels like a kick in the teeth. We've doing the best we can, and the reward for that is we're probably going to cut your budget. I would really hope you guys would seriously think about that and realize with what everybody's saying, please, don't cut the budget. We really and truly need the money because as they, everybody's been telling you, the world is going to be very difficult and very different, and it's hard to want to do your best when you bend over backwards and do everything you can, and the reward is we're going to cut you. We're going to cut your salary. We're going to cut your supplies. We're going to cut. That's all I have to say. So I do ask for your support for the budget.
Thank you, Jenny. Next, Walter O'Connor. Walter?
I'd like to speak to the council and to you, Mr. Mayor. Walter O'Connor, Portland Drive. Uh as you know, I'm chairman of the Board of Finance, and I would like the council at a minimum to uh pass the budget as presented by the Board of Finance. And quite frankly, what I've learned over the last two months with regard to the impact that COVID nineteen is having on education throughout the state and the country. Uh research I've done shows the fall semester could be anywhere ten to twenty-five percent more expensive than the base budget. I would uh like you seriously to consider um passing the budget at least by the Board of Finance, if not returning to the budget that the council passed at the end of February, beginning of March. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh next, Wendy Fallenback. Wendy, would you like to say, address the council tonight?
Uh no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had spoken to the council at your previous meeting, and I'd like to keep the floor open to allow everyone an opportunity to speak and just be part of the meeting. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Um next is uh um Mr. Esposito, Tom Esposito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tom Esposito. I live in Big Bear Hill, and I'm speaking as a resident. Um I I I just want to say from my perspective and what we've gone through and uh and the and the the relationships I've had with the teachers in this community over the years has been stellar. I appreciate you. I always have. I think everybody in this council has. I have stated publicly over the years, I think the teachers have gotten squeezed in the last forty years with explosive growth in the administrative staff, and the money has come from you. Quite frankly, the money should stay with you. We could use less administrators and good quality teachers. Um I also want to make a suggestion, and this is a suggestion I made eleven years ago. I made it ten years ago. I made it nine years ago. I made it eight years ago. I I just suggested that we should record the best teachers in the district. And when I brought that up, people said, well, there's a privacy issue with that. I said, I'm not talking about recording the classes with children in them, but take your best teachers and go through the curriculum and put it on video. And at the time, it was for kids that needed to hear it from the teacher a second or third time, or the kid that was sick, or the kids that maybe had behavioral issues that couldn't stay in class, but needed to see that class. Right now, if we had taken that advice years ago, we would have about eight years in the can right now of every class that ever was available in the town of New Milford. And that would have taken a lot of stress off the teachers. And I know people remember this because a lot of the teachers who've been around for quite some time, especially the folks running in the union, know this because it was prohibited to have teachers recorded after that suggestion. Somehow, it was something that was offensive. I don't know why. It was something that would have helped the kids. And right now, right now, those kids could have been watching these videos, taking the stress off themselves, their parents, who are just as stressed out at home as teachers. I tell you, two kids in in school and tons of friends, ti- parents are freaking out right now themselves. If those if those classes had been videoed, we would have been a lot farther ahead. I hope the teachers take it upon themselves to do this. It wouldn't have cost a lot of money. We had the film, we had the film commission, we had the youth agency uh filming capabilities, and we had AV capabilities in the schools. This could have been done already. I suggest you take that back to your group, your your uh your teams and come up with a plan to videotape the best teachers in the district solo so that kids can use this in case this type of stuff happens again. Thank you. I appreciate the hard work. I see it from these teachers every day in my own house. Thank you.
Would any other Town Council member like to address the Town Council as a private citizen in public participation? Mary Jane?
Um no, but um I think Amy Fotopoulos wanted to come on the call, but and she was she was blocked too, that she wasn't able to get on. I don't know if she's still on and she wants to speak. Is that possible? You could get her on.
Ken, can you, is Amy Fotopoulos still on the call?
She is.
Yep. Can you unmute Amy?
She is unmuted now.
Amy, would you like to address?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thanks so much. Um Amy Fotopoulos, Ten Chatfield Road. Um for transparency, I am a member of the Board of Finance, but I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent, a taxpayer, and a concerned citizen. I implore you and urge you to please add back in funds to the Board of Ed budget this evening during your deliberation. The Board of Ed already made tough choices during the budget process. The impact was already planned for them to make cuts to programming and staff, and there was no room in the budget for important things like capital expenses for next year, which is a concern since that would cover things like electronic device replacement and Chromebooks. Class size was in some cases uh still going to be larger than best practices, and this all came before the additional cuts made by the Board of Finance. With COVID nineteen, um obviously, distance learning was um implemented. I thank the superintendent, the Board of Ed, the teachers, the administration, and all the other staff who have dove in, very quickly adapted, and done their best, learning new ways of working, new platforms. Um I'm sure for them, it has not been easy. As a parent, I can say that distance learning has been extremely difficult for our family, and I know many other families where the parents and children are struggling. Um distance learning is not a perfect replacement for live instruction. I'm sure it was not intended to be. Um but when students return in the fall, we're going to see a very large spectrum in student abilities, and we're going to see a wide range of academic and social emotional needs that that we have to address. Kids who struggled with distance learning by not having face-to-face instruction, those who didn't have the benefit of parents at home who could sit with them to take them through and implement the curriculum, sitting with them side by side, or parents who are split between having to implement distance learning for multiple children each day. Many of these children will come back to school in the fall far behind. And we will need additional resources and additional staff to help them catch up. I'm sure and I hope by now many of you have seen the CDC's recommended considerations for schools for the fall, um which was updated on May nineteenth. Um guiding principles that they have recommended outline different areas of risk. What would be considered the lowest risk for students coming back to school in the fall versus more and highest risk? Highest risk are for full-sized in-person classes, activities and events where students are not appropriately spaced apart and are sharing classroom materials or supplies. These are things that we must address. This is going to call for the need for additional um cleaning and disinfection, additional staff and supplies. Um in terms of classrooms, um obviously with the class sizes what they are today, there will need to be careful thought and consideration given to whether we need to modify the layout of a classroom. That might look like additional equipment, additional seating. At the elementary schools, you may not be aware or may be aware that we have classrooms that don't even have desks. Some of the younger children are seated at communal tables. The CDC's recommendation are for spacing, seating, and desks at least six feet apart when feasible. That means one child per desk, six feet apart, all facing forward in a classroom. With the class sizes that we have projected for the fall and with the existing space that we have today, that will be challenging. There may be a need to look at additional space, look at other buildings, look at additional um equipment needed for that as well. Another key item, creating distance between children on school buses. The recommendation is to seat children, one child per row, and skip rows when possible. Again, I understand these are just recommendations, but the thought of potentially finding ways to separate children a bit more on the bus is is difficult. Um so these are all things that must be considered. Also, the recommendation is for ensuring sufficient amount of supplies to mitigate um children sharing high-touch material and for them to avoid sharing electronic devices and books. So there are families who have electronic devices, but there are many that do not. So consider, please, the need for boosting supplies. I say all this just to to remind you, I'll I'll close quickly, I'm sorry. Just to remind you that the the budget for next year that the Board of Ed put together was thoughtfully created, and that didn't even factor in any of these additional items that the Board of Ed is going to need to think about for how we will bring children back to school safely in the fall. So I implore you to please add back in funds to the Board of Education budget and also to please ensure that we are protecting one of our greatest resources, which are our educators and our staff. Incentivizing and retaining top talent should be a continued concern for the district. We cannot afford to continue to lose our best teachers to other districts. Competitive pay, benefits, and showing our appreciation will go a long way to help them today. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy. Um Kenneth, Pat Erickson?
Pat Erickson?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Pat.
Thank you very much. Uh thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council. I'm probably the only one that's going to question tonight. I might have missed it, but did we have any administrators coming on begging to not have a cut in their salary? Seems funny to me. I've been a lifetime resident, and every time there's a school budget, we say we need to cut our teachers. Why does it have to come from the teachers? Why can't it come from the highest-paid administrators? If you want to find some other ways of saving some money, I have a suggestion. Think back to the oil tank fiasco. You lived through that. Steve Tracy stood in front of you and said, I'm a history teacher. What do I know about this stuff? That one oil tank alone cost us almost a hundred thousand more than it should have. Now granted, the school budget, maintenance budget, is different than the town's. But where do all the monies come from? They come from the taxpayer. If we could combine the maintenance staff with the town maintenance staff and not have two, our school board would not have to be worrying about cutting teachers' salaries and taking away from the chi- kids. They are going to be in a very difficult position with this COVID on how to just educate our students. Let's take the rock off their back, put the maintenance back to the town. I served on the JPS Committee. I don't know what maintenance our maintenance for the schools actually does because that place was left deplorable. If you look at the Larson Farm that they are letting fall apart, that's an historic building in this town, built in the eighteen hundreds. They haven't even put a coat of paint on it. It's it's deplorable what they've done. And the Larson family was promised it would be taken care of, and it's not happening. And now they're going to go after the town for it. But I did notice that they did have the money in the maintenance to buy a brand-new two-fifty pickup truck. I don't know, why are we cutting teachers' salaries? Let's combine the maintenance departments. This town does not need to. Let's save the taxpayers' money, and let's stop having to cut the school system's budget because they don't know where they're going to get the money from to fix a roof or to fix a floor or to fix a window or to fix anything. If we combine the two departments, let the school board deal with what they're trained to do. Education and nothing more. I wish you the best. You're going to have trouble. Everybody was talking tonight about how you can't cut the budget. The last I knew, we were at a twenty-four percent unemployment rate, the same as the depression. You've got to do something. You don't have a choice. But we can start making smarter choices by spending our money more wisely so we can stop taking it away from the teachers and the classroom. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um that's the end of the public participation.
So um I'm sorry. Um I just got a text. There's a Harry Singleton that wanted to speak to that was muted, and I think that's the last one that I know of that wants.
Kenneth, can you see if there's a Harry Singleton on the call?
There is.
Okay.
He is unmuted now.
Harry, would you like to speak to the council?
Yes, please, and I very much appreciate this opportunity. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Uh Town Council, you guys have been incredibly patient. Um I I'm here not only as a resident of Milford, living on West Meeting House Road, but also a very proud husband to a twenty-year educator of this fine district and also the father of a student who's going through the district as we speak. I'm going to add my voice to urge the Town Council to I'm going to add my voice to urge the Town Council to continue to support the educators of this fine district. Focus on the budget, no cuts, no concessions. We've heard tonight the focus on not only the children and the term "respect" was used many times, and I feel that word is very, very important at this time. The educators, as well as the students, have gone through an unprecedented time, as many of us have. Many of us are home. We're dealing with kids. We're dealing with a lot on our plates. And I have a very unique perspective, okay? Not only as a father of a student who at times has to force themselves to stay on task and work so hard, but also as a spouse to an educator who has cried many times, who has vented frustration, anger, fear of not doing enough, and to turn around and to be facing with some sort of a budget cut hurts. It not only hurts the educator, it hurts the community as a whole, and this is something that seriously needs to be considered. The word "respect" keeps resonating with me. We have to respect them. We have to show respect and we have to lead by example. The kids who are coming up will see how we lead and how we manage. As a taxpayer, I fully support whatever is necessary to make sure that not only is this budget put through the way it needs to be with no cuts, but additional funding be brought to bear. There is so much at stake here, and I understand that there is fiscal responsibility, but there's also a community responsibility. Do right by our teachers, do right by our students, do right by the parents who have to deal with these kids. These educators have been the emotional support to not only the children, but I've seen far many conversations where parents lean on these educators. The weight on their shoulders is immense. Respect them, respect these kids, respect what we need to do, do the right thing. I call upon you. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, Kenneth, can we for now mute the attendees?
Pete, can you still hear me?
Yep, I think you muted us as well.
My apologies, everybody.
Oh, good.
My apologies. I clicked the wrong button.
All right, thank you. So, all right, so we've heard from the public and we'd like to thank the public for expressing their concerns and their thoughts during the budget. I would like us all for a moment to stand for the pledge and then a moment of silence. Mr. Skelly, could you pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
And for a moment of silence, for the men and the women in the armed forces and also for Mr. George Floyd, his family, and those who have been, all the people that have been affected by the social unrest. Thank you. And before we move on, if I could just have a moment of the council's indulgence for one second. Chief Saruto had sent me a letter that I would like to read to the Town Council tonight. And then Saruto will be talking at our next Town Council meeting. So if you just have a moment, I'd like to read the letter that he sent me to the council and to the citizens of New Milford. He just says, "Dear citizens of New Milford, we are writing to acknowledge the death of Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis as a tragedy that has caused much pain and concern to our community and country. Mr. Floyd's death reminds us all of the need for fairness and equality in our society and our justice system. Every person deserves to be treated with dignity and respect as everyone matters and everyone has a voice. Town of New Milford is a close and caring community, a community of strong faith and honor. The Milford Police Department is a part of this great community. We strongly believe in the principles of integrity, equality, and respect for all. The men and women of the Milford Police Department care about the community and strive every day to understand the needs of the community and the importance of working with the community in an open, ethical, and compassionate manner. It is our mission to provide excellence and service to the entire community in every interaction. Our officers are committed to equitable treatment and take their oath of office to heart in being fair, impartial, and unbiased in the application of the law. We are all in this together, police officers included, and even more so during these difficult times. We must stand together, understanding that our diversity is our strength." Thank you. So next is Mayor's remarks, which I will put as part of the Mayor's comments. Chief Saruto, and thank you to Chief Saruto for his letter. And we'd just like to thank the Town Council, the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, all of the department heads, and all of the administrators that have all come together to present the budget and the budget process. And for review, as we all know how the budget process works in New Milford, but for those that are on the phone and on the call, what happens is on the town side, which is the main side that we are responsible for on a line-item basis, is we meet with the department heads, create the budget. Then the Board of Education looks at their needs and creates their budget. They bring it forth to the mayor. The mayor then makes the recommendation and brings the mayor's recommendation to the Town Council. The Town Council then reviews it and makes their recommendation and sends it on to the Board of Finance, which we called this year. Unfortunately, COVID-19 happened. When this was going on, also the budget moved to the Board of Finance and the Board of Finance made their recommendations. Governor Lamont then issued his new executive, one of his executive orders. And what the executive order was, was to not allow for the people to vote on the budget referendum this year. We tried several ways to see if there was the ability to do so, from mail-in voting, figuring out different solutions, and we were told that we could not do that. So we had people from the public that were upset that they didn't have a right to vote. And I'm sure we all, as we've all talked about before, agree with that. That we believe that they should have that right to vote, but we also need to comply with the law. As Town Attorney Randy DeBella told us, an executive order is law. So we have to comply with that. So here we are now, and what it is, is the Town Council now will make their deliberations. And for this year, which is an unprecedented year, whatever the Town Council comes up with and decides, that will be the budget set for the year 2021. I can't thank everybody enough for everybody's work so far as we're going through this process. And it's all about trying to keep the need with everyone and trying to help as best we can during these circumstances. As has been talked about before, we have to look at the needs of all of our residents, our children, our seniors, our taxpayers, our business owners. Most are under duress as we speak due to COVID-19, whether it be the stress of emotional anxiety that we have. A lot of people have been, due to the stay-stay-home rules, have been home. Also, the economy, as was mentioned a little earlier, we are looking in the mid-20% for unemployment in New Milford. And that's not including the men and women that are on the unemployment federal that's going to end in July. So I know there's been a lot of concern about our residents, about the ability to pay, so much so that our council has decided to defer taxes, both property and motor vehicle taxes until October. I know our Finance Director Greg Osipau has talked about the fact that we probably will run into a cash crunch in August, which is we're very thankful to the fact that we stewardly kept our unassigned fund balance. And that's going to be something that we're going to really need to rely on as we move forward. And also, which has been mentioned here many times, is what is going to be the unfunded mandates to the Board of Education for different COVID-19 things they're going to need to be able to reopen. And those are things I know they're working on right now with the state Board of Education as far as what's going to be needed for unfunded mandates as we move forward. So that's kind of the history as we've gone so far. That's what I have to say right now for Mayor's comments.
Hey Pete, can I just ask who is actually, as I think Tammy asked, who's on the call?
I'm sorry, roll call. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
So Stephanie, did you want to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Michael Gold.
Thomas Pizito.
Mary Jane.
Chris is here.
Scotty.
Abe Lawson.
Randy DeBella. Do we have Walter?
He was on earlier.
Yeah. Okay.
And Mike Nahom is not there either?
Mike was here earlier. Are you guys muted?
Looking under. I don't see them.
Okay, thank you.
Can Ken double-check that, Mayor, just to make sure that they're not there?
Ken, can you double-check that Walter nor Mike Nahom is on the call? Well, Ken's checking. I'm calling Walter right now.
Mike Nahom said he is unmuted, but you can't hear him.
Who's there? Okay.
And Walter's number's busy. So Ken, can you see Mike Nahom on there? Ken?
Sorry, Pete, I didn't realize I was muted.
Okay, can you see Walter Bear on there?
I don't see his name, but I believe because he's calling without a computer, his name's not going to show. But I think when I muted all the attendees, it muted him as well. So I just need a moment. I'm going to unmute everybody and go down the attendees list and mute everyone whose name is showing quick.
Walter's calling me right now. Walter, are you online?
Probably not if he's talking to you.
Okay, Walter's been on for the last two and a half hours and he got cut off, so now he's on my phone. Does that count?
Can we trust that you can hear him?
Tell him to call back in.
Call back in.
Can you call back in, Walter? Thank you. Bye.
And then what about Mike Nahom?
Mike Nahom is here.
But he's got to be unmuted.
Ken, can you see about unmuting Mike Nahom?
I...
I wonder if he called in on his phone instead of the audio from his computer.
He is on his phone sometimes.
I do not see him in the attendees list at all.
All right, let me try calling.
I just texted him to call back in.
Oh, now they unmuted me.
Muted who?
Hello?
Michael's calling.
Hello? Who's that?
All right.
This is Susan McNamara. I don't know if you can still hear me. I had tried to get on earlier, but I couldn't get the unmute off your webinar.
Mike's calling in right now again.
I don't see anyone responding, so I don't know if you're hearing me.
Does somebody want to-
We can hear you, Susan. Can you hear me? It's a shame that you know, it's difficult for people like myself to get on.
Susan, can you hear anybody? Susan?
Now they've muted. Now you've muted yourself, so I can't hear you.
Technology.
Yeah, it's a shame, isn't it?
You just heard Katie. Can you speak?
You heard me.
I don't know, trying to get the text.
Well, this is Susan McNamara. I live in town. I've been trying to get on all night.
Okay, go ahead and speak.
Go ahead, Susan.
I want to agree with everyone else. I'm very disappointed in New Milford with cutting taxes.
Just a bit of a teeny- Did I say that right?
Excuse me? I'm, I live at 23 Norton Lane, New Milford. I am a retired educator from a nearby district. And it's a shame how little technology that the Board of Finance is giving to the schools. That was one of the main reasons why everything was so confusing at the beginning. The fact that they took all the technology out of Scatacote to give to the kids was concerning because now that technology, if it doesn't come back in working order, is going to have to be replaced, which is again another expense. Your teachers were not trained, nor were your students, even though we had anticipated long-distance or distance learning for many years. So it's, to me, as a person who's coming from a system, having just retired last year, that had trained their staff and had one-to-one computing, it shouldn't have happened like this. And I certainly hope that you, as a committee, will do something to rectify it when you get the chance. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a nice-
You too.
Thank you.
So Ken, can you unmute Mike Nahom?
Um, I think he may be unmuted because some people are muted, others didn't.
He's, Mike said he thinks he's unmuted, I think. That's why he just texted me.
Mike, can you talk?
He said yes. Say something. Say something!
He got his-
Oh, now he's saying he's muted by the organizer again.
Hi, Karamba. Ken?
I haven't clicked any, I haven't clicked Mike's name, so.
Do you see him there? Can you click and unclick him a couple of times, maybe?
I think he's calling back in.
His name isn't even on the list.
He's calling back in. He just texted.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just a teacher, but I just wanted to say this is how it is for us with the kids.
Who is this?
Hard.
Who's speaking?
I'm sorry, this is Susan Waldman, and I'm a teacher at Northville.
Oh, Susan, okay.
But I just wanted to let you know how I'm watching this, and this is like what we all have gone through with all those kids in a classroom online, you know, like trying to help them. It's so hard. So I just wanted to live it a little and understand some of it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give Mike another minute.
Mayor, are you still there with us?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, just checking, just checking.
Mike?
Right, I'm calling in now, just.
There you are.
There you are.
What, you know, you're, they're hearing him from my phone, you're talking.
All right, hold on, I'm trying to call in, but you have to get up here.
Okay, so you want me to hang up?
Okay, we can all hear him there, though.
Yeah, well, he just said he's gonna try calling again.
So remember that Who's on First that the Marx Brothers used to do, was it?
Uh, Abbott and Costello.
Abbott and Costello.
That's the one, yeah.
All right, as an aside, has anybody seen the Mayberry, the Mayberry Police Car driving around town?
I will.
The gentleman that owns that police car that looks like Andy Griffin?
No.
He's been driving, he's been driving through Northville playing the song, I hear the whistling all the time, the Andy Griffin Show.
Yeah, what number, are you calling the 1-562-247? Okay, that's it, yeah, try it one more time, all right, bye. Walter's gonna try again. I don't know if the number of people has put our system over the edge here, or what?
I'm sorry I asked.
And the uncomfortable silence that only a web meeting can bring.
Well, we can sing.
Go ahead, Kate, let's hear it.
Yeah, maybe you can sing.
No, I didn't say I could sing, we can, it's not gonna be great.
He's gonna sing as Weary Man right now.
So my bridge on my road has a hole in it, that was pretty exciting today.
Really? All the way through?
Yeah, yeah, right through, you could slip straight down to the water, like, the asphalt was maybe like, not even a half an inch thick, it was like, and so the Public Works came and closed the road this afternoon, and, um, of course, we had people that were driving down the road and just removing the barricades and blowing through.
Wow.
Gary.
Wow, who does that?
Yeah, yeah, isn't that crazy? And then waving to other people, telling them, yeah, you can come through, and I'm like, no, there's a hole in the, it's like a hole in the bridge. It's crazy.
Is Mike Nahom on yet?
That's a long way around, Mary Jane, to get around that bridge.
It is a long way around, people are not happy about it, but it's a safety issue, they had to close it, so.
Right, okay, I don't see Doug or Michael.
Doug's, well Doug's.
They're dropping like flies. We're past everybody's bedtime. Where'd they go? Mike Nahom with us?
Maybe it's the bathroom break.
Yeah, well, there's that too.
I also had a bear in my yard today.
Wow.
It was a very exciting day.
I guess so. All on the bridge and the bear.
Yeah, crazy.
I can hear you guys, we won't let you go in, and it still does on the webinar, so, that says you're muted by the organizer.
Okay, so.
Oh, we can hear him now.
Can you guys hear Mike Nah?
Yeah, let's keep him with us.
Yes.
You can only hear me through Pete, though.
That's fine.
I can hear you, Michael.
We can hear you. And Walter, Walter, when he called me before he tried to call back, he said to me, but he's trying one more time, I think, he said he votes no. And then he was gone, so I don't know if I can be his proxy or not, but.
All right, so Walter's not on, everybody else is, is that what you're telling me?
So far, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Is David still on?
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you with us?
Yep. Need Mike?
Oh, wait, one minute, here comes Walter, hang on.
Okay.
Yes, Walter, couldn't get in? Okay, well, you stay on my phone, I'll put you on speaker, I'm gonna sound loud to you, but I'll put it near the speaker, hold on. Okay, Walter, say hi.
Hi, are we there?
Can you hear him?
You're all here.
Yep, I can hear him.
Okay.
Are we, what are we doing, are we discussing this?
We were waiting for Walter, now you're here.
You're waiting for me?
I don't know, Mayor's gonna start us off right now, right, Mayor?
Uh, we just started off basically with the history of how we got to where we are, and that we all wanted to make sure there was a referendum vote, but unfortunately, with the executive order by the Governor's Office, that wasn't allowed. And so the budget actually comes back to the Town Council for the final deliberation. And then once the deliberations are completed by the Council, that's the budget for this year, the year 2021.
Understood.
And so next is going through the deliberations.
Okay. All right, I'll start item number one. Motion to accept the Board of Finance recommendations for a Board of Ed budget of $64,464,776 for the year 2020 to 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I disagree with, with that, and I think we can do better, and everybody makes great points on both sides. And I think if we talk about this, we can come to things amicably. Now, the mayor alluded to the fact that we could use the undesignated, or unfunded mandates and things like that. Good idea, great idea, but, you know, as we all know, we want to keep our bond rating as well. And we don't even know what the cost will be on the town side. So I would very strongly urge us not to, so, how can we make it reduced without making it reduced? So I would like to amend by saying that the Board of Education budget be reduced by $700,000 and putting into the education budget for medical expenses, $700,000 from the Internal Service Fund. And if someone could second that, I'd like to speak to it.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, please comment with that, please.
David Lawson. Uh, David, we have a motion that was made, and in order to make another motion, we'd have to withdraw the first motion.
Well, I was amending it.
You have to make, you have to make the motion for the Council to agree to amend the motion.
That's what I'm doing, but I'd like to speak to it as well, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Second for the amendment?
Mary Jane seconded already.
Okay, and then I can speak to the, and then I'll like to speak to it as well.
Yep.
We have, don't we have to vote on whether we're accepting the amended motion?
Right now, he's speaking to that motion, because there's a first and a second, so we're on the, on the, on the amended motion.
Yeah.
Motion.
Yeah, the Internal Service Fund is a fund that we're presently not doing, as you, all of you know, with the Board of Education in conjunction with the town, we went to the state plan, which saved literally millions of dollars on both sides. So concern at that time was, well, what if we have to go back? And I agree with that, we would still need to have some administrative funding to go back, I don't think we are, but that wouldn't be prudent to totally disregard that. Presently, we're sitting with $3.5 million, which literally is doing nothing. And what I would like to propose is to $700,000 for the medical on the school side and $300,000 on the town side. That way, in essence, yes, we are lowering taxes, which I think is something we need to do. We can do this by doing this, it is painless. Okay, we have the money, we're not getting into the undesignated fund, which we may need later on in the year for tax collections, et cetera. So that's the reasoning behind that.
Okay. Greg Ossoff is on the line, he is our Finance Director, so Greg, is this something that can be done? Greg? Greg?
Can I, um, can I, Pete?
Yes.
Um, I know you were on the Council when we would, well, annually, use funding from the excess funds from this account, reduce medical on both the town and the BOE side. However, we had a change of administration, and with the change of administration, we had a change of insurance consultants. And I know that, that's something that, since we're away from the being self-funded for insurance, again, it's not necessary, however, as I will repeat, because this very board brought up the fact that, well, what if we have to go back, which is legitimate? But I think $2.5 million would more than cover our administrative costs if we had to do that. And in doing this way, we are lowering taxes overall between both the school and the town by a million dollars.
Does anybody have any other comments?
Oh, we can't get Greg on?
No, I'm trying, I'm trying to get him, I can't. No, we can't, he's just texting me, no, Greg, we can't hear you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may offer another resource for this?
Let's see if, uh...
Pete, you want me to call someone else in the council?
Yeah, can you, can you do that, yeah? Greg?
Yeah.
Okay, so Greg's on the phone, so Greg, did you hear what Dave Lawson said?
Yes, I did, and currently we're committing half a million dollars, there's not 3.5 million, there's 3 million. Of which 500,000 has already been committed to this budget for budget relief, 250,000 on town side and 250,000 on the Board of Ed side. So we are well there.
Hey, hang on, I need some clarification here, so it was 3.5 million, and 500,000 has already been taken out?
Currently, 3 million, oh, don't forget, we're still self-insured for dental.
Yes, yeah.
And we had some incurred but not reported claims that were paid against that fund.
Yeah.
So currently, it's 3 million, not 3.5.
Right.
500,000 has already been committed, so that means the 2.5 you were talking about, Dave.
Right, so 500,000 has already been committed to next year's budgets on the school and the town side, am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, 250,000 for the Board and 250,000 for the town.
Okay, all right, so then I will refine mine, because I don't want to go below 2.5 million in case administrative costs.
Mike, can you?
So with the amendment that I would be proposing, this is a problem, I mean, I, I surely would. We, we were asked if we can do it, and the answer is, yes, we can do it. And again, we still have a, a, um, undesignated fund to tune at $20 million in case this whole thing falls. I think all of us are in agreement, we do not, we do not want to go back to the taxpayers for supplemental tax, and I'm, I'm, I'm dead set against that. Dead set against that, and I think we need to try to lower the taxes as best we can. And I don't see, you know, even with dental, I mean, dental claims are next to nothing, and we all know that. So I'd like to refine that by saying lowering the school medical by an additional 300,000, and on the town side, 200,000. I was unaware that we used 500,000, I don't know where I missed that in the budget deliberations. I, I did not know that that had happened.
Okay.
So with that, with that being said.
The funding balance specifically says transfers are not healthcare related purposes and not be committed from the farm.
Yeah, this isn't for health, this is healthcare purpose, it's for the premiums for our health insurance on both sides.
We're gonna use 500,000.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear very well.
We, can we vote on the amendment?
Yep.
Move this forward, or?
Hang, hang on. Do we have any other discussion on the motion?
Just read back what the motion is, please.
Stephanie, can you read it back?
Uh, hold on, let me find out where he, the motion, so Mr. Lawson moved to amend um, the motion to decrease the Board of Education budget by $700,000, but put in $700,000 from the medical, from the Internal Service Fund for, uh, health, health insurance purposes.
I don't think that's the motion, is it?
Yeah, well, that's the amendment I'd like, but speaking with Mr. Ossoff, it seems that $500,000 was already taken from that account. So I would like to amend my amendment by saying 300,000 of the Internal Service Fund monies into the school and 200,000, when we talk about the town, going into the town premiums or that.
So 200,000 into the town and what's in, into the Board?
300. 300,000 for the event, for the premiums.
Greg, is the Finance Director, can you just say it one more time so the Council can hear you, because I don't think they heard you? Greg?
I should defer health insurance, don't need release in that area.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't understand that.
Greg, can you repeat that one more time for everybody?
Currently, the amount that's budgeted on both the town and the Board of Ed side for health insurance is adequate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear that, is that gonna work, and it's amendment?
Yes, we, Walter and I believe you were on Town Council, and we've done that previously for all over a dozen years.
Right?
Yes.
And then we, it was extended when we had a change of administration, and now we've had a change of administration back, so.
Okay.
Trying to reinstitute a practice that we had that did work, and it did help.
Okay.
Do we have any other discussion on Mr. Lawson's motion?
There's no second, there's second amendment.
Yeah.
All right, so just, just repeat the motion again, please, so it's very clear for everybody.
All right, so Mr. Lawson moved to amend to $300,000 from the Internal Service Fund for the Board of Ed and $200,000 for the town, uh, health premium.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
There's no se- There's no second, though.
Okay, do we have a second from anyone?
Second.
Okay, and a second from Mary Jane. All those in favor of the amendment? Signify.
Hi.
Hi.
Walter's saying yes, if you can hear him.
Okay. All, all those opposed?
Hi.
No.
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 Okay, the motion is defeated. We have the orig, Mary Jane?
Well, I'd like to go back to make an, uh, motion to amend the original motion.
Okay.
And add, um, I think it was 1.2 million.
Excuse me, Mary Jane, I don't mean to interrupt you, but somebody has their television or something on. Please mute yourself.
Not me.
I think it's all the telephones that are on.
I know, it's not me. Um, anyway, I would like to amend the original motion, to add the 1.2 million back to the, um, Board of Ed budget that was cut by the Board of Finance. I think this is gonna be, you know, a really, really tough year for everybody, for all the kids, for all the teachers. It's just gonna be a huge, huge problem for everybody, financially, emotionally, socially, and I think, you know, it's just, the problems are just gonna be really almost insurmountable to an extent. And I think we have to have everything we can have, every resource that we can have to help them, help our kids, help our teachers, you know, get through this crisis. So we just don't know what's gonna happen by September. These kids could be going, splitting up, you know, half the first grade goes in the morning, and the other half goes in the afternoon. Have additional transportation costs. It's, it's, it's unimaginable. I, I don't think any of us sitting here can even really begin to imagine what this is gonna, what this is even gonna look like by the fall. And they may go back to school in August and be out by mid-October or early November if, if we have another COVID spike again, so. And then we're gonna be back to at-home learning, and all these kids in the district that don't have access to computers and are gonna need all the digital access that they can possibly get, is, it's gonna be expensive, and I just, I just, I think it's really foolish on our part to cut this budget, and I'm, I'm not happy about the cut that the Board of Ed made. I think it was not prudent, so.
And if I could, uh, with Mary Jane's, um...
We get a second and have discussion, or?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, and before we have discussion, could I have the, uh, the, um, I should say, uh, I don't even know how to, how to verbiage it, but Angie Chastain is, is on and had wanted to speak as the Board of Ed Chair, and we're trying to get her, and we're trying to get her unmuted. Is it okay if we get her on?
Absolutely.
Ken, can you try and, and unmute Angie, who's been trying to get on?
Unmuted. She is unmuted now.
Hi, this is Angie. Can you hear me?
Can you hear us? Okay, so for those that know, Angie's the Board of Ed Chair, so Angie, could you speak as the Board of Ed Chair? Sorry about the, the muting, unmuting problem we're having tonight.
No problem. Uh, thank you. So first of all, uh, I'd like to give a shout out to all the teachers that are online. I, I think that there are so many here tonight, really is a testament to their dedication to the students and the community of New Melford, and we just really appreciate their taking the time, uh, when I know they've taught all day and have a million other things to do, to, to be on this call. You guys had submitted some questions, and we had answered those, and I hope you had a chance to read through our responses and give it thoughtful consideration. I would like to take a few minutes and highlight a few points, uh, as you deliberate. I understand you're in a very difficult position. COVID-19 has created a situation the likes of which we have never seen, financial, social, and emotional. I know people are out of work. I know people are on unemployment, and I know the town deferred the tax deadline and is concerned about cash flow. I also know that the Board of Ed's charge is to educate the children of New Melford. The budget reduction from the Board of Finance will have serious impact on our ability to provide the necessary instruction for our students. While this year we are in a unique position, and we will have approximately 1.4 million in surplus, I want to caution you that that money is spoken for many times over. We will have to make cuts to the, to our budget, even with this surplus. We're seeing suggestions thrown around for re-entry to school with everything from 10 kids to a class, to a bus monitor for every 10 kids on the bus. They want touchless everything, water fountains, toilets, paper towels, uh, sinks, you name it. We are hearing we must take students' temperatures. This is gonna require additional staff and equipment. Students need to wear masks. There need to be plexiglass shields between staff and students, and this doesn't even begin to take into the account the additional cleaning that must be done, which again, will require supplies, equipment, and staff. The 4, 1.4 million dollar surplus will be gone before school even begins. Some of you are saying some of those things may never happen, and you're right, they may not, but they may, and we need to be prepared. It's the unknown, unprecedented nature that is most concerning of all. Additionally, if we take that 1.4 million to cover the reduction from the Board of Finance, that puts us nearly in a 3% deficit as we begin our '21, '22 budget cycle. That's something that I'm not sure we can recover from. We ask that you consider all these factors as you begin to deliberate our budget. New Melford's parents are trusting all of you and all of us to do the best that we can on behalf of their students. And if you have any additional questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
So, um, Angie, I have a question. Um, so the budget cut from the Board of Finance, I thought it was 1.2, it was 1.4 million to the Board of Ed?
No, I misspoke. I think it was just 1 million. If I said 1.4, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it was...
When I... That's the, that's the, 1.4 is the projected surplus that we're, we're preparing at the end of the year.
Oh, it was 1 million for the cut, then. Is that correct, Pete?
Yes, 1 million is the reduction in the request.
Okay.
Well, um, I'd like to say, Angie, thank you very much for pointing out some, uh, the details of a lot of this that I think many of us, uh, didn't even consider. And, uh, and I guess we're pretty much used to unfunded mandates as it is, and everything you just said is very expensive. It's, it's very labor-intensive, it's personnel-intensive, if you have to have smaller classes. Where are we gonna get the teachers to do that? Where are we gonna get the space for that? And I think we really need to give the Board of Education the support they deserve, not just the Board of Education, but the students that we have. And a million-dollar cut, I know what it looks like. That's people. That's the only way you're gonna get there, is people. And that's the very resource that we need right now.
Yeah, I would just like to say, um, I don't think any of us take this lightly. I mean, this is, this is such a serious situation, and I understand about the unemployment. I understand people are out of work, but this 1 million dollars was only gonna equate to like $44. You know, it's not a big, it's not a big, gonna be a big tax hike, so. You know, I, I just, I think we need to bite the bullet at this point and just do it. We cannot cut this school and, and have, having them come back for, you know, additional funding later on, or go back to the taxpayers and send them another tax bill halfway through the year. They're gonna be getting the ta, first tax bill, the July bill, late. And if by January, we have to hit them with another bill again, it's gonna be really ugly. So let's just put that money, that 1 million back from the Board of Finance cut. Give it back to them. They need it. They desperately need it. This isn't a joke. This is not something that we're making up, so. I would urge you all to support it.
Mike, do you have a comment? Mike, you're gonna have to unmute yourself.
I'm muted.
Ken, can you unmute Mike? Hear me now?
He muted on his own side.
Very good.
Okay, we have to remember and, and, and say to the public that we, as town council, can't tell the Board of Ed how to spend their money. So of course, we care about the teachers. Of course, we care about the kids. For God's sakes, my wife's a teacher, and I see her working harder than ever before. She worked not, she doesn't work in New Melford. She works in a different, uh, school system. But i- it's the same thing, and we're town council. We're not the big, bad evil that everybody makes us out to be. So I get, my hackles get up, you know, when I hear everybody, "Oh, you can't do this, you can't do that." It's not up to us. It's up to the, the Board of Ed to decide how they spend their money. So my mind is, is that we move forward with what we have, and if we have to give more money as we go through the school year, then that's better than giving a whole bunch of money and then not being able to have a say in where it goes in the first place. So I think it's very important that we play this very, very slowly and see how it goes come September. We have to follow government, govern, Governor Lamont's edicts and all that other stuff. So just to throw a, a million dollars back in the budget, oh, it's okay. Well, no, it's not okay. I think we gotta just take it one step at a cha, at a time, because this is unprecedented, unprecedented times. We don't know how this is gonna go. So I'm all in favor of moving forward as it is. Thank you.
So I have a question for Michael. Are you gonna be in agreement with supplemental appropriations come January, when the Board of Ed comes back looking for more money? Would you, is everybody on this council gonna be agreeing to supplemental appropriations?
We'll have to see how it goes, but I'm not gonna just vote for a million dollars. We care about the teachers. We don't care about all the extra fufu and all the stuff.
There's no extra fufu.
And we have to make sure that we support the teachers.
That's right, and that's why we need that million dollars back in that budget, and it's not fufu. And I can tell you, this COVID virus is not going away, and we are gonna have another peak in the fall, believe me.
And pandemics only last two years, so we just have to get through the fall and the winter, and then we'll move forward.
Right, and they need that million dollars to get...
Take it one step at a time.
So let me, let me just make a statement. So it's no big deal if it's a four, if it's 41 extra dollars right now to throw that million bucks in, but it's gonna be 40, it's gonna be a big deal in January for the $41? I say we wait till January. Well, you just made a statement before, Mary Jane. You said it's only $41 difference. It's only a $41 difference, according to you. If it's only a $41 difference, it'll be a $41 difference at the end of this, at this budget cycle, as opposed to being in, in, in January. So if the money is needed and come, and people come forward, we have never turned down anybody in need, okay? We're never gonna turn down and not support the kids or the teachers, but I agree with Councilman Gold. Right now, you know, four weeks ago, the CDC's, the CDC's guidelines were completely different than they are now. What's gonna happen four to six weeks from now? At one point, we were told, "If you don't wear a mask and you don't wear gloves, you're gonna die." And then all of a sudden, wearing gloves wasn't such a big deal, and now there's, now, only if you're sick or if you're in a public place is a mask. I mean, these things are changing on a daily basis. I, I don't think if we're gonna, nobody's gonna hold anything back from this school if it needs it. They're gonna have, they have a million for holy budget surplus.
All the 100,000 people who are dead.
Pete?
Okay, Pete?
Not in New Melford, Mary Jane. We live in a very low COVID area.
Well...
Mayor, I'd like to get back to the, uh, motion and the...
Mike, yep, if I could, yep.
If I could speak.
Mike, you would like to speak, Mike?
Mike, you there?
Mike?
Mike? Mike? He was on my phone. He just dropped off.
Oh, okay.
Pete?
All right, yes.
Um, I, I'm glad that...
Walter's asking if we're gonna vote.
Wait, I got Mike back.
Hey, Mike, can you make a comment?
Hang on, I got Mike. Okay, I'll yield to Mike and Walter.
Thank you. My, uh, let's go with Mike Nahom and then Walter. Mike?
Hi, you guys hear me okay?
Now we can, yep.
Go ahead, Mike. Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Hi, um, I keep hearing about all, all these, uh, how hard it was for the children. I know it was very difficult for them, but we're not talking about how hard it is for the people that are paying these taxes. You look at these businesses, at the restaurants, um, and the barber shops and all those who lost income for two to three, some even the bars going on four months of no income. But their, their property taxes aren't changing. The landlords that aren't collecting tax, uh, collecting rents from anyone, their property taxes aren't gonna change from, uh, I mean, it's not like when you, when you don't make income, you don't have income tax. When you don't make income, you still have your property tax. I know with my own personal gym, we're now on our third month of zero income, and yet my property taxes in that building are huge, and I have to figure out a way to pay them, and yeah, I got a little bit of extra time to pay them, but I still have to pay them. And it's not, we're not looking at those, those people and how difficult this time is for them. And those people that are unemployed, yeah, they're getting the $600 extra a month now. That's ending soon, as Pete said. So, you know, we, we have to look at the whole picture. I'd rather, I'd rather save the money now. It, it, if, if, if we do end up needing to do more stuff because of mandates, then we want to do that. But you know what? All these businesses are getting mandates. You know, the barber shop can only work on half the, the people used to work on before. The restaurants in, in 20 days, I mean, it's 50% capacity. That's not a lot of money to make up when they lost three months of income. So you, you guys aren't talking about those people. It's just tough out there for a lot of people. And now, now you go into the people who've lost their jobs. So I just think without the, you know, as Pete said, we tried to find a way to vote, and our governor absolutely forbid it. So without being able to have our town people voting these budgets, I just feel wrong about raising the taxes on them. It, it's just a very, very difficult time. I know how it is firsthand, how difficult this is, and it's, it's frustrating. And I, I for one, do not see how I can vote for a tax increase when the, when the voters in this town don't have the chance to say what they, I don't have the chance to vote on it.
Mike, uh, Katie, can you put Walter on?
Walter's here. Go ahead, Walter.
Yeah, I think the, at the day, people are learning about the, uh, complexity of public instruction and kids being in brick and mortar buildings and what goes on, uh, without the public really know, knowing what goes on. And I really can't make any more comments after living, uh, listening two and a half hours to, uh, staff, members in the public, talking about the importance of public education. My comments would pale their comments. They're just absolutely, uh, a tough act to follow. And I cannot be in favor of the Board of Finance cuts to, uh, uh, the more education. I would vote no against the Board of Finance, uh, recommendations. All that said...
Pete? All right, Pete? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I agree with, uh, my fellow councilmen that, you know, we should see how things fall into place later on. I concur with that when it comes to physical things like, uh, uh, cleaning products, uh, thermometers, things like that. However, this budget, if we pass it this evening, the Board will be making their adjustments, uh, next month. And I've had 16 years of experience of a 1 million dollar cuts, because, well, that tends to be what we got for 16 years and sometimes even more. And the only place you can go to find that kind of money are people and programs. It's really that simple, which makes it too late to come back and ask for money. That's the problem. You know, for the physical things, fine, that will work great, but to cut a million dollars straight out of the gate, you're talking people and programs, just like that. And, uh, that's, that's, that's the dilemma we're in. So I would caution us, you know, to, you know, cut a million dollars on the get-go. Perhaps we could put it in reverse, meaning if we find we do have more money, then we can bring it back. We can do it that way, but we have to look at the short term, the long term. You're correct. But we also have to see, realize that, well, hey, those decisions have to be made immediately, and that would be people and programs.
Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Hi, yeah, I would just like to say that, um, wanna be clear, we talk about cuts. We're talking about a reduction from the ask. Uh, the motion in front of us is still an increase of the budget. And if you look at the per pupil spending, uh, in this school district, because we've got dramatically reduced student population, the per pupil spending has been a significant increase over the last several years. And the other thing I would say is, um, you know, nobody knows what's gonna happen in the fall, but early indications, if you look at Europe, Denmark went back to school April 15th. but early indications, if you look at Europe, Denmark went back to school April fifteenth. And they didn't do it, reduce class sizes. Um, and their COVID numbers have not spiked at all. So they have not. Um, and so I would say that, you know, maybe, um, you know, we're, we're the, the dire, a lot of the dire predictions that have come of this haven't, uh, come true, and I, and maybe it won't with our schools either. So hopefully, if we learn from, from other, uh, countries that are going through this, uh, you know, we'll be better off than we think.
Okay, so we have, we have a, Mary Jane?
I would just like to say, um, make a comment about Denmark. Denmark does not have the poverty, poverty sectors that we have in this country because they have a more socialistic society, and they do not have big, huge poverty sections like we do. So that has, that is what has affected their COVID numbers while they're lower. They're actually, their death rate is still, is climbing. So, so, um, I guess we need to vote first on the amendment that I put forward.
Yes.
If we could just correct it to one million instead of one point two million.
One closing comment, Mr. Mayor? And, and I, um, I would, I would honestly, uh, take the advice of the, uh, Board of Education Chairs, uh, what she just reported to us. I know many of you asked questions. Uh, I didn't get, I wasn't privy to those answers, uh, which they had been shared. Uh, but, uh, I think, as I said before, we've all made great points. And we can always, I would argue, let's do it in reverse. Because if we go forward with the million, it's only one way you're getting there, and I'll repeat it again, and that's just people and programs. And we saw the uproar of a program from the last time around.
We have the motion in a second. Uh, Mary Jane's, all, what was that, Mike? And Kenneth, can you unmute Mike, please?
He's not muted.
Mike?
Michael? Michael? Yeah, can you just read the motion, please?
Oh, hold on, let me go back and find it, um.
Mary Jane's motion was to add one point two million.
No, one million.
One million.
It's one million, okay.
Sorry, it was.
Okay, so we have a first and we have a second. All those in favor of Mary Jane's amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Walter said aye, for those who couldn't hear.
Okay, uh, opposed?
No.
No, Mike Nahom.
Okay, so the motion fails. Um, next, Katie?
The original motion, can we vote on that now?
Yeah. Question for the original motion.
Yep. Okay, so the, the motion was to accept the Board of Finance recommendation for the Board of Ed budget in the amount of sixty-four million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for twenty twenty, the twenty twenty-one year.
Okay, I have a second on the motion.
When I made the motion, Thomas.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, uh, I just wanna be clear that we're open to supplementing anything that's necessary. What's our threshold going to be? Like, what are we willing to spend money on from the undesignated fund?
I think as we, uh, my opinion would be is that we move forward through this, have a continued dialogue with the Board of Education. And as they're, they're gonna plan for what they're gonna need, because I know their guidelines have still been not solidified by the state yet, is having that dialogue with them, asking them to come, which they said they would, and then looking at if there's needs that they have to do, that we have to fund those. I mean, that's just a fact.
Okay, and, uh, on the flip side, I'm assuming that we'd be willing to do the same for the town with mandates on the town side.
Uh, continue operations, we have to do those things.
Okay.
One, one point we have to look at too is, is if we do, if we do a supplemental, at least the townspeople can vote on it.
That's true.
Well, wait, wait.
Some corporations not voted on it.
We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Let's vote.
Let's move it.
All right, so we have a motion, or we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Walter says no.
Opposed, I'm opposed here.
And Dave, you're opposed?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, so motion, motion carries. Um, next?
Okay, next item is that I would move to decrease the Board of Finance recommendation to revenue accounts as follows. I'm gonna read the account and the object, so there's no questions, Stephanie. One, zero, four, one, one, nine, zero, zero. Object four, six, one, zero, one, which is interest and money market, decreased by sixty thousand, six hundred and six dollars and six cents. Org number one, oh, four, one, one, nine, zero, zero. Object four, six, one, zero, four, which is stiff interest, decreased one eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Org number one, zero, four, one, one, nine, zero, zero. Object four, nine, five, zero, five, which is operating transfers into waste management fund, five hundred thousand dollars.
We have a second.
Total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Any discussion?
What is that amount total, Katie? What was the amount?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand even.
All right, and that's the extent of the cuts that you're recommending?
That's the revenue.
On the revenue, okay.
We have a discussion on the revenue. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Walter, did you have a vote?
I opposed.
Walter says no.
Good, and in case you didn't hear, Mike, Mike said, Mike Nahom said aye.
And Mary Jane, you said?
I said yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving on, the next item. Move to reduce expenses from personnel as proposed by the Board of Finance as follows. Decreasing item one, zero, four, one, four, two, zero, zero. Object five, two, zero, zero, which is FICA. And that would be reduced twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Decreasing org one, zero, four, one, four, two, zero, zero. Object five, two, two, zero, one, Medicare by six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Decreasing org one, zero, four, one, four, two, zero, zero. Object five, two, eight, one, zero, health insurance by three hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Decreasing line one, I'm sorry, org one, zero, four, one, four, seven, zero, zero. Object five, one, zero, 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 town clerk personnel, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Decreasing org one, zero, four, two, zero, one, zero, zero. Object five, one, zero, zero, four, police sergeants, ninety-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Decreasing item, uh, org one, zero, four, two, zero, one, zero, zero. Object five, one, zero, zero, six, police department patrolman, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Decreasing org one, zero, four, two, one, three, zero, zero. Object five, one, zero, 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 building personnel, that'd be building department, seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Decreasing org one, zero, four, three, zero, one, zero, zero. Object five, one, zero, one, four, public works personnel grades one through four, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Decreasing, uh, or one, oh, four, three, zero, one, zero, two. Object five, one, three, three, zero, recycling overtime, twelve thousand dollars. Decreasing org one, zero, four, four, one, seven, zero, zero. Object five, one, zero, 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 Department of Aging personnel, nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Decreasing my, uh, org one, zero, four, four, one, nine, zero, one. Object five, one, zero, 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 max personnel, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Decreasing org one, zero, four, five, zero, one, zero, zero. Object five, one, zero, 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 library personnel, twenty-nine thousand and twelve dollars. Increasing org one, zero, four, one, four, two, zero, zero. Object five, two, six, zero, zero, unemployment insurance, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-five cents. That comes to a total decrease of five hundred thousand dollars.
Second, second, second by Mr. Esposito. Any discussion, Mary Jane?
I have a question, um, you know, when I looked at it, I, you know, I think a job that probably could be cut is the, um, is Mr. Dupe's job as community coordinator. I forget exactly what his title is, but I think that was around fifty-five thousand. So I would recommend that as a cut, and I would also recommend, um, that the, any department head that's making over eighty-five thousand dollars, take a ten percent cut across the board. You're asking all these other people to take cuts? I think you need to start looking at the top and maybe taking at the top, take the cuts up there. That would be my recommendation.
Interesting. Pete, I have a question. So that would make a cut, how many personnel on the town side between retirement, between the cuts? Have a number.
Uh, hang on one second, one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, ten.
So if I'm clear, we're cutting ten personnel on the town side, correct?
Correct. And some of these, some of these personnel, one of the things we did offer was an early retirement program, which some have chosen to do, um, to help mitigate the costs. Um, I did speak with all of the bargaining units, uh, when this first happened and we had the, uh, the COVID nineteen, uh, really impact, uh, uh, both our society and looking forward as we're seeing the headwinds. Um, I'd asked them, uh, about the opportunity to, uh, at least for this first year, um, to do a freeze. One of the bargaining units agreed, the other one said no. Um, so we're here with, uh, these reductions to get to where we need to be for, uh, for the, for the reduction to get us to, um, if approved altogether. Um, this will get us to where we're at a fl, a little bit lower than a flat, uh, tax increase this year, which will be none.
Thank you for the clarification, Pete.
Absolutely.
Yes.
David? You said some out of the ten that proposed to, uh, be eliminated. How many of the ten did take the early retirement?
Uh, let me see, one, let's see, one, one, two, I believe three of them.
Okay, uh, I, I'm reluctant to support this for the mere fact that, uh, uh, I heard a couple of police officers would be, uh, eliminated, as well, some people from public works. And, uh, those are the very things that keep this town going. You know, if you don't have roads, you're not gonna get around. And if you don't have roads that are protected by our officers, then that makes it even worse. Uh, I see that we just put two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars into unemployment. You've thrown another seven people on unemployment, you're bringing your unemployment costs up yet again. Now, I would be assume that the two hundred and ninety-three thousand includes the increase in unemployment benefits should this, these layoffs occur.
That's correct. And then, uh, Dave, to answer a few of your questions, the first is for police, uh, personnel. Um, myself have been a tremendous, uh, advocate for the police, even before I got involved in town government and through town government. Since last, the last three years, we've added an additional nine patrol officers to the force. So currently, currently, our organizational chart is one chief, one captain, two lieutenants, seven sergeants, four detectives, and, uh, thirty-seven patrol officer. Currently, we have two patrol officers that are in training. So the reduc, so the reduction in the amount, uh, for the patrolman line would not affect services as they are today. There would be no effect. And it, and if we, and if we look at and hoping, as we all do, that the economy does the V economy, where we have in the third and fourth quarter, the economy coming back, we have, we have tax, uh, tax collections that are very stable, then we have the opportunity to, uh, bring, uh, some of these, uh, people back organizationally.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I hope that same is true on the, uh, school side though.
Mary Jane?
Um, I have a question on the Department of Aging. Is that going to be a personnel cut?
Yeah, so Mary Jane, this was the, uh, secret, part-time secretary position, a new one, that we were gonna put in. Um, so there is no one in that position, that would be a new position, part-time, so that was for the reduction in that.
Okay, um, you know, I, I, um, I'd like to make an amendment and add a reduction into the community coordinator for Mr. Dupe's job to have that, um, cut. And then, um, asking that, um, the department heads that are making over eighty-five thousand take a ten percent cut in pay.
I'm never supporting that.
I got a second.
I'll second that for discussions.
Okay. Uh, do we have any discussion on Mary Jane's motion? Okay, all those in favor of Mary Jane's motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Walter, are you there?
I'm there.
Did you vote?
I did not vote for the amendment.
Okay.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No, okay, no.
Mike Nahom said no.
Walter says no.
No.
Chris?
I, I would just like to point out that the cuts, uh, that are presented in, uh, Katie's motion, I believe equals about a five percent headcount cut on the town side. Um, and, and, you know, none of these were, were jobs, yeah, I mean, they, I, I think we had a need for them all, but these times are dire, and the economic times are, I think are gonna last for, I think, two to three years, uh, the results of these. So, um, these are tough cuts. There was a lot of numbers put out that we, we had in the motion, but these are people's jobs. And, um, I think it stinks that nine of us, uh, have to make this decision instead of the thousands of voters. Uh, but thanks to Governor Lamont, this is where we're at.
Any other, uh, comments on, on the, Katie's motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Walter is opposed.
Okay.
I'm opposed.
All right, motion carries. Okay, Katie, next?
Those are all the motions I had.
You have capital?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My eyes are blurry. Okay. Uh, moved to reduce from capital expenses as opposed, as proposed by the Board of Finance. Org one, zero, four, nine, zero, one, zero, eight. Object five, seven, two, zero, zero, road projects, reduction of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any, any discussion?
I just.
Go ahead, Katie.
This isn't discussion, I just wanna make a comment for those who maybe weren't adding up as we went along, that, that makes a, a total of one. that, that makes a, a total of $1,150,000.
On the town side?
Yes, that's right.
Wow.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Any further discussions? And, uh, is Greg, is Greg Osipoff, are we able to get him on the phone? Let me try calling, calling him again. Ken, can you unmute or, or does he, or is he not, it looks like he's not even, doesn't even have a, a microphone by him?
Um, my screen is showing he is unmuted and has a microphone.
Greg, can you hear us? Greg? Hello, Greg?
Hey.
Greg? All right, I have you on the phone. So we made the adjustments, so can you tell us what that's gonna come out to as the mill rate? And the increase or decrease?
Mill rate.
Wait, can everybody, can everybody hear Greg?
Yes.
Okay. I put here. In here.
Reduction.
So we're having a reduction?
Yeah, 0.09%. For all intents and purposes, it's a flat budget.
The mill rate will go from what to what, Greg?
One second.
Well, it's basically flat, right?
Yeah, it will go.
We picked up the basics.
Right now.
Sorry, I, this is not my show.
Oh, God. Turn it off.
Greg, it's a 0.09% decrease? Okay.
We're going from 28.7% to 28.68.
Okay. Did everybody get that? Yep.
No, can you repeat that? Could you repeat that?
So Mary Jane, now the current mill rate is 28.7, and it's going down to 28.68.
All right. Okay.
It's a 0.09% decrease.
Walter, Walter disconnected.
Walter what, Katie?
He disconnected about around the time that Greg came on, so he didn't hear.
Okay. All right. Uh, that's off me, Jenna, uh, Tom?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye and aye.
Good job, guys.
Take care, everybody. Everybody.
Bye-bye. Bye.
Chris, thank you so much. Thank you, folks.
Okay.
Good night, good job. You guys did a great job.